There's silence. Time is nine o'clock, we will go ahead and open up our work session. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Mark, would you like us please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the list, we're gonna have Kirk Darwin Johnson. Apparently he is not here yet.
Is he Dave since he's here?
Uh, yeah. Dave, we can, let's, let's just start talking on, we can, we can come back to this, this one if we need to. So. As soon as Darwin gets here, so the MOU for the fairgrounds and maintenance.
I actually, I'll put that together and I guess we can ask Dave any questions, but.
Yeah.
Memorandum of understanding for the fairgrounds is mainly to have our facilities, personnel take, and Dave, facilities manager take over the maintenance of the fairgrounds. We figure that will give the fairgrounds, a couple of extra bodies plus equipment to help with the maintenance and restoration of different things at the fairgrounds. And so, that's why I had Jim Bailey, Jim Bailey, our leading counsel, prepare the MOU, so. You guys have questions or?
I think the only thing, you'd kind of given it to us before, I kind of pointed out that I, I was just curious when the next meeting was really for the Fair Board and when you were gonna present that tonight. Okay.
So I'll have all the information from them, the Fair Board, Mark's regular session for you guys, so.
And then the, under maintenance requests, I would probably just say, you know, for decision, for when the, it says when the Fair Board determines that maintenance is or may be required, the Fair Board will email requests for maintenance. I would just include that for, I would say the Fair Board and/or.
Well, the way I, the way I see it on that, on any big maintenance, I don't mean the change of light bulb or if a door handle is broken or whatever, something that's small, you know, yeah, you, you put in your repairs, you put in a work order and we go fix it, just like we do with all the rest. When it's a big repair, like maybe a new sewer line, that's where we sit down and have a meeting and we talk about it, how to go that way if it's.
Or the cost.
Yeah, the cost of it. I'm just not gonna say, yeah, put a new liner without getting their permission.
Sure.
With the funding. Or, you know, we're gonna do it right with the pre-current laws, we're gonna go by, you know, bully law or the contractor laws, stuff like that. That's where you, where I would go and, and talk to the Fair Board and, and Mark would be on that too, so. And that's when I believe the Fair Board, they probably want me, or to meet with me, but on the preventative maintenance and just the normal maintenance needs, anybody can put a work order in and we'll take care of it, if it's a light bulb or a door handle.
I think, I think what James, the chair was thinking though is, it says the Fair Board and we need to have more of a fair manager slash fair manager added to that.
Yeah, I, I would just.
Because she's not considered part of the board.
And then you're also gonna have an onsite maintenance guy.
Right.
So he can put in the work orders.
And tha- and that's, that's true, I mean, I just didn't want it to be written to where only, i- in our MOU, we're only the Fair Board.
They have to get approval from the.
Yeah, they'd have to get pr- approval from their Fair Board and send a request.
Before they do, so the work request.
Even if it's something minor or something, right. And that was the only reason I was mentioning it, because I like the Fair Manager to have some ability and just, even if it's just a light bulb. Um, but we want that record when there are requests for maintenance. Um, so if it e- even if it is just a light bulb, we want that work order.
Right.
Uh, so we can trace that back.
Exactly.
But we want her to have the ability to request those little things.
I get what you're saying.
So, if you, if you guys are okay with it, I put Fair Board slash Fair Manager or Maintenance Employees, that work.
Yeah, sure, as long as they have the mobility, yeah. Commissioner Schuhlenberger, did you got anything?
No, I, this is a change from normal practice. And I think it's a good suggestion and we're gonna see how it works soon. I like the change.
Yeah, and we'll just see what the Fair Board says, you know, if they have any changes or any amendments they wanna make to the item, that'd be good.
There, there is one thing you guys need to talk about in tonight's meeting, Mark. Uh, but who, you know, the authority of maintenance buying, because there's times where my guys might have to go buy a, light switch or whatever and who's, cause Ronnie asked me about this, like when we, where do we cross it, well, like with the airport, Tom and I both have the right to sign for, you know, to purchase things on a purchase order or, you know, run that APs and to get, pick money out of that budget. So I would suggest talking the budget to, the maintenance budget, the maintenance budget, I just, are you gonna separate it? Are you gonna keep it all together and then just put it underneath as well, as far as the maintenance needs?
Sounds good.
And so when you say that, then the money's coming out of the Fair Board budget?
Yes, it'll be out of their maintenance.
Maintenance budget.
Budget.
Does that need to be in there?
But we need, yeah, that's, I, I'm gonna add that on there. And then that, it'll give the facilities manager the capability to spend money out of that budget for maintenance. But again, if it's a high level of dollar, if it's just your preventive maintenance, but if it's an amount of money, I'm gonna go to the board before I spend it.
So what is that now?
Five thousand.
Well, that's for, for, for a bit, I, I, anything over a thousand or five hundred dollars, I'd go to the board before I spend it.
Anything over five hundred?
Because that's, you know, that, that's, they might have another way they wanna do this, they're, they're, but.
Right.
It's no different here, I, I usually don't buy anything over three hundred dollars, I'll get one of your guys' permission, use it if I rent it, I just go buy it and put it included. It just covers me, it covers them.
Right.
Transparency.
Yeah.
Yep. Alrighty.
And they might wanna change that number, so.
True, yeah.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, I mean, within reason, cause there's things, you know, things cost, I mean, a hundred bucks, I have to, to fix some for a hundred bucks and it's kind of a pain for me to hide nobody down to get their approval. So you gotta put a guideline on some of the work that we do to prevent it.
We'll see what they, they say.
You know, if it's emergency, that's a different story too, if I got sewer water shooting up in the air, well, I'm gonna fix it, I'm not gonna wait.
Right.
Talk about that later, but, you know, et cetera, it's communication.
Absolutely, no, it's, I think it's a good, good direction. I don't, I don't wanna, if we, we can come back to this, um, but I'd like to see if we can get Darwin, um, if we can get onto your topic real quick.
Yeah, you guys talked, I'm gonna.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, you're, my, my opinion. Can you put it?
Alright.
I think you just did the fair one, but.
Oh, are you kidding?
We, we, we'll come back after Darwin, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. I was later, I should've been first. I was printing the deed, so you wanna come up there or am I?
Uh, you're fine, you're fine.
So, um, I'm here to talk about the land sale, um, board order that you guys make each spring before, late, late winter, uh, early spring, so that we can publish it for consecutive weeks, uh, prior to the auction which we hold. Uh, we, we put that on for the first Monday in May. It used to be in June, that was getting too close to, um, the time in which checks were needed clear and make sure we had these things deeded to the next owner, so that by July first, it's on the tax rolls. Because if, after July first, I'll get a whole year of no taxes and we lose that tax too, so we move it up a month so that we can make sure we get uh, all these deeds processed and, and make sure we get taxes for them. So, um, in October, we got deeded to us fifty-three properties, of which, uh, I've, I've sent you guys the list. There's eight which, uh, I believe we should hold, seven happen to be in the ODF, um, NW mapped sage grounds core habitat.
How many of them?
There's seven. Um, these are near, um, Hart Mountain and then also the, um, plush cutoff road, um, you know, either side of the road there, underway plush. So, um, historically, that's been our practice, to hold them off at least from the sale. Doesn't mean we've done anything with them, just means that we, um, still own them and then at some point we'll want to dispose of them through transfer or sale or whatever the case may be. So, um, at a future date, this board, you know, um, ought to sit down with me and, and those agencies and see if there's any thing we should do to move that forward on, on some of those transfers, just to block up some of that land. Um, but also maybe with some of the, the private owners in those areas, like Taylors and Fitzgerald's, well, plush kind of, um, primary two owners that I can compute that. The other one is a home on the south end of town that was under contract, um, by a record buyer who hadn't recorded anything with clerk's office and so, um, you know, he's been the occupant for many years, he showed me documentation that he owns the place, or had always been purchasing the place. And then the, the owner passed away and so all that kind of got lost and, and all that. Uh, and so I've explained to him that, you know, at the minimum, we'd have to have him pay back all back taxes and anything that would've been due, um, since, um, this, uh, was deeded to the county, so, um, I'll give you more details on that, but that's the other property now, for some reason.
It's on hold.
Yeah, it's, so it's a one that's on hold, um.
So what was the person's name?
Uh, it was, uh, Robert Woodruff, I believe.
So the one south of town.
I don't have any of that information with me.
On south end, yeah.
Yeah, it's on the south end, Brownsfield.
Right, from Barnes, yeah.
Yeah, right on, on tenth and LG, or on the northwest corner.
And they're still trying to figure out the deed.
Yeah, we're still trying to figure that out, I've got, uh, some information from him and, and so I'm, I'm just kinda compiling that and I'll bring it to Jim Bailey, make sure he's comfortable with it, as well as you guys. At a later date, but it will need to get transferred back to him, but he's gotta pay all those taxes and stuff that we're, we're due for those six years and, and all that, so. Um, we'll, we'll get into that, it'll be a few thousand, um, you know, it's much, much easier to do it this way, the law allows us to do it this way too, so we'll, uh, take care of it. At a later date. There are a number of other properties on our sale list that, uh, you know, have structures on them, uh, most of which are either in town or in urban growth boundary. Uh, and so, you know, they, they're homes or shops or, you know, commercial lot, uh, they, they just need to be, it's my recommendation definitely to get rid of them. Um, you know, they're, all these properties are sold as-is, so if, if there's anything, you know, uh, wrong with the structures, if they're past water bills, this, that and the other, um, you know, you know, the buyers need to be aware of those things and, and look into them. We're not obligated for anything that's wrong with the property, um, you know, but we're, again, we're just kind of a holder of a property to get it back on the tax sale, so.
So if it's a derelict structure, can we, part of the sale be that that structure is removed?
Um, definitely.
To help with our nuisance.
We could write that as a deep restriction, we generally haven't, um.
But maybe we need to.
Yeah, we, we probably could, I mean, they know and I explained to them, you know, hey, a lot of these properties could be, you know, community high sores right now and, and they may, they fall under a nuisance payment program as well, we're just not spending money cleaning these properties up, because then we lose money ultimately. I mean, most of these properties are going for so low that, um, you know, by the time we even got a crew over there to clean them up, it'd just be, you know, and then we'd have to charge money for my time and everybody, and it just eventually not work itself out and getting any money back to the taxing districts, which is ultimately what we're obligated to do with the sale of proceeds of these, you know, these properties. You know, all, all the taxing districts lose and so when we sell them, then we take our cost to actually, you know, run the program and then we distribute the remaining and it's always a good thing for those taxing districts, they definitely get more, um, than, than what they were losing. But again, if we start cleaning things up and doing all this kind of extra work.
I'm not saying the county cleans them up, but.
Yeah, the next board, yeah, has to, and we tell them, and that's what I mean by saying that, we tell them that these are nuisance properties in many cases, you need to clean it up or we're gonna have to send you a letter and then you're gonna fall under the nuisance payment program and that's not gonna be fine for anybody. And, and usually most owners are doing a really good job cleaning them up, I mean, I can give you a couple of cases of that, but, yeah. I don't wanna name anybody specific, but I, I know a few people have done a good job of that. So, uh, you know, I've sent each of you and I'll have, um, the Google Earth, um, on our website soon. Actually, I'll put it straight on to our mapping GIS program, um, list of the properties that you guys are agreeing to sell. And then, you know, we'll go down that list and, and make this happen. Uh, and we publish, like I said, for consecutive weeks in the Examiner and I send it to the North Lake papers as well, where the majority, you know, two thirds of these properties are on the North Lake, so.
So, so Darwin, I know that you guys talked about the, the property on the corner of one forty and three ninety-five.
Yeah.
Um, and the Brownsfield.
Sure.
What do you, what do you think that we need to do, I mean, I would really like to have that place cleaned up. I mean, it's more valuable knowing that the Brownsfield has done their work on that property before we sell it.
So it's got a assessed value of seventy-three thousand and change right now, our auction price will be forty-four thousand, uh, sixty-nine dollars. That's the minimum with the hundred eighty-five recording cost. There are multiple people I know that are interested in already, it's a prime location. Brownsfield is a, is a program where, you know, yeah, there's many steps in the program. And, you know, the first is analyzing what's on the ground, what's in the ground, um, and then looking for more grant money to then clean out properties. If you looked at that property, you'd say, well, if anything's on the ground, it's under the ground and, and if we don't disturb what's under the ground, probably gonna be okay. A lot of times, you know, whatever's been left there, um, it's hard to see and know, but that's why when we sell these as-is, you know, we're, we're not, we're not liable for any of that. If, if we contain a whole lot of property year after year, then we may become liable as well, but it has, you know, we're just a holder and exchanger of this, getting back on the tax rolls. There's, there's no.
So your advice would be just go ahead and.
Sell it and we'll let people know that, yeah, and, and, you know, we can continue to talk about that with the players that need to be talking about it.
And the Brownsfield folks can still reach out.
Yeah, they can reach out to them, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There may be, maybe, I mean, I haven't investigated each of these properties really well, I mean, I've looked at them, you know, math, but, I mean, there may be other issues with other properties too, but, but, uh, you know, it's a buyer beware thing. Most of the people that we get are just investors, they're for these properties too, so, um, you know, some of the homes may be someone that wants anything to build in them. You know, this commercial lot that we're speaking of, you know, certainly someone's gonna wanna let a business out there, so, which is good. Yeah, opportunities, I mean, these are, like I said, the, you know, there's a couple of homes on here, I mean, um, there may be issues with that, we've, we've had issues in the past, trying to get people evicted, um, there may be a squad or two of you in there right now. It's been a tough year for, for getting that, obviously since, you know, mid-October, October, I've had some things going on, so I have to spend a whole lot of time trying to worry about evicting people. You know, personally, I'm a, you know, a landlord as well and evicting people right now, really, real headache, so, we'll see what happens. But there's no problem with what, you know, this is just at this point, you know, to sign which ones you wanna sell and making an order and then that allows me to move forward and, you know, advertising it up until the day of the sale, I mean, you guys could pull any of these properties. Last year that happened and so, um, like the two twenty North L Street was pulled and then later, uh, asked to be put back on. Um, obviously that ask was late fall last year and so with everything going on, we're just gonna put it on this sale again, uh, starting at the sixty percent. Um, so when I put the, you know, this is just the ones that we haven't agreed to do anything with yet, because they've just gone and deal to us. Some of those past ones, like the Roundup, isn't on our over the counter, um, list right now available. We, prior board decided to put that down, the lowest percentage, just to try to get it gone, which is a break from our policy, normally sixty percent. We auctioned it at sixty, no one bought it, so it would've sat at a normal forty a week later, forty percent.
And it's still there now?
Yeah, it's, it's, it showed up as forty right now on our website, but we're gonna drop it that day down to fifteen. And, uh, you know, forty is now, if someone gets it great, if not fifteen, and, um, we'll see if we get an interest and get it, get it off the list, yes, Mark.
What about the artwork that's in there? Can we remove that since we've already sent notice to the landowner and put it on that wall?
Yeah, we definitely could, and maybe we should talk to Dave and, and just have his crew go over and remove it. Um, maybe at least two of you, I believe, have seen it.
Yeah.
Was that family of yours that actually carved it? Yeah, so on the, on the back wall, the west wall there in the building, there's, there's a really awesome mural carving that's, uh, just amazing, so. Yeah, if we can take it down and carefully and preserve it, great, um, there's a whole lot of things that could happen with that building.
It's possible, but I could have a brother take it down.
Yeah, since he put it up, he might know how to best take it down.
What do you wanna do with it?
I wanna put it on this wall right here.
Right outside this door.
You got enough space?
In the landing?
It's big.
I know.
I mean, that was almost the whole length of that building, which is.
What is it?
About twenty-five feet wide.
It's a mural of some buffalo and.
Cowboys.
That's okay, right?
Yeah, I have a picture of it.
It's a roundup, a roundup.
Yeah, it's on that back wall and it is gorgeous and I think it would be an absolute shame if that roof did collapse. Anyway, um.
So, uh, we got this sale then coming up. When is the next sale?
So that, this will be the next, so we always do it in May and then once the sales, auctions happen, once a year we do, do this. Some kind of do twice, but they're usually, you know, their sensors office is doing something different than ours is. We, we just get them deeded once, so we just sell them once.
Okay.
Um, and, but we sell properties throughout the year after the auction, so once the auction happens, that's at sixty percent. If nobody's interested, a week later, a policy is we drop to forty percent through our market value, then it's first come, first served. Usually what happens is we get a lot of interest and so then it becomes a drawing, um, because people are interested because they want it at the lower price, so they can turn around and sell for more. So we just, anyone who's interested will write down their name, um, when they sign in, um, and then we give them a number and then the number goes in, into a hole and we spin around and pick a winner. So, I mean, if there's two people, you have a percent chance, three, three percent chance, twenty-five and so on, and, and sometimes you get a lot of people interested. But then after that, it drops to forty percent, it'll sit at forty percent for a whole year, people can come in any day and just pick it up and buy it. Uh, and you probably just don't list, and then after one year, it drops to twenty-five percent and then after a whole second year, it drops to the lowest we can offer, which is fifteen percent. So that's why we're on the Roundup Tavern, knowing that it needs so much work, we're just gonna drop to the lowest we can legally sell for, which is barely gonna get back our money from, from taxes, when, when you get down to fifteen percent, you're barely getting a tax on that.
We just lost, we just won.
Yeah, we just need, we just, we're not gonna do anything with it, so we need somebody else to do it, yeah, so we need, so.
Then, uh, I guess Commissioner Robertson, with the discussion we had on the three ninety-five, one forty property junction there, the way Brownsfield works, I guess I'm good with going ahead and selling the property.
Yeah, me too, and the, the thought of, uh, you know, the Brownfield process is good, but it takes a very long time. And they're pretty good about talking to the next landowner and starting that process with them, yeah. And, and the next landowner has the right to.
And we can still, and we can still talk about that, as starting the process too, and then offering it, when you sell it, say, hey, we're already in the process, here, here's where we're at and just continue on if you wish, um, I don't want it to be time wasted, you know, if they said, no, I don't wanna have anything to do with that program, so. I'll talk more with Ginger and.
Yeah, I don't know if we have that much time.
Yeah.
Just make a decision.
Okay.
But yeah, for us to hold on to that, to me, would be a huge mistake, so.
Good.
You know, we're gonna transfer it May, then if there's not enough time to really get in for it and stay in the program, then, you know, but I'll talk to Ginger and find out more. There's, there's, I mean, it might be a consensus agreement, we don't even agree on it, if we wanna start that process, but we'll investigate the first step process.
My discussions with her, she said time is clicking.
Okay.
Sounds good. Now, uh, you don't need anything else from us then?
No, uh, just a pharma head update, you know, we just ended the month at fifteen applications, um, I know, I know it's running, so, um, oh, I started with man, but, um, you know, we, we had fifteen applications in the first two months, um, which puts us on track for ninety, which would be more land use applications than I've had, so we're, we're, we're pretty busy. Things are moving and that's good, um, just, whichever thing I've got going on, it kind of makes things tough, so just have people bear with me. We, we have scheduled a April pancake, I mean, that, I think we have six applications already on that agenda with, um, it's a little too mature to, to announce another application coming in, but there's a sort of thought, I don't want to name which company, but, but definitely, and it's not in the valley here, but it's an expansion of, of a part of the operation, so.
Yeah, alright.
Which will need a go exception, which will actually come up.
I think we actually, we talked about that one, yeah.
So, uh, it's a little early, but, uh, I won't say exactly who, so.
Alright, sounds good, well, if we need anything else, we'll talk to you tomorrow then.
Yeah, sounds good, sounds, hopefully it'll be.
Thank you, Darwin, alright, thanks, Darwin.
Thank you, Darwin.
Thanks, you too. Thanks, you too.
So can we quickly go back and just kind of?
I just kinda wanted to hear what the whole thing was.
Okay.
I mean.
This is, it's not like it, it affects you at all, no?
I know, for my budget.
On our maintenance request, um, Chair Williams wanted to change some verbiage on there. He said, right now, it's, the state's, um, Lake County Fair Board determines ma- that maintenance is or may be required, the Fair Board will email requests to, Commissioner Williams wanted to add Fair Manager or Maintenance Employee, so anybody that's out at the fairgrounds, Fair Board, you or Nick for that matter, can send their requests for maintenance into Facility Manager. Way it stated, it was only the Fair Board was able to do that.
And we didn't, we didn't want you guys having to go through the board for the small stuff, so to speak, you know, getting approval, especially if it's, you know, light bulb, whatever else, you know, basically if you need something done, you just.
Well, that was kind of something, and I know we'll talk about it at lunch at the meeting tonight, and so, um, is, I like the idea a whole bunch, I really do. I think this MOU needs to have a little bit more detail to it, cause it brings up tons of questions.
So that, that's why we're talking about it now.
Yeah.
It's a draft and, and he's done all the work on this and it's really good.
So.
Yeah.
So, so far, we have, we have the idea, right?
Yes.
And so, but we, it has to come before two words. And so I'm trying to condense it so each board approves the deal. And so, uh, an- another thing that was brought up is the maintenance budget for out there. The Facility Manager would have to, um, go before the board, the way it stands now, would have to go before the board on changing the light bulb or getting money out of the maintenance budget too, so he has to have permission from the Fair Board to use, to be, have the authority to take out money out of the maintenance budget. And he put in the price, anything that's under five hundred dollars wouldn't have to go before the board, that's just an idea. Uh, I don't know, you know, what.
Because we typically do five thousand.
Yeah.
And that's, but he's saying that five hundred is agreeable to him, anything over five hundred, he would totally take to the board. And that's what, for approval. And that's what for me, yeah.
What do you think?
Wes, it's an emergency.
Well, so that was one of the things that that came up in my, cause I've been thinking a whole lot about this, cause I'm also going into budget and so I've really been thinking about this. So. One of the things that, I don't have supplies necessarily in my budget, I put everything under repairs maintenance, because it all kinda is repairs maintenance and it's less of a chart of accounts. And so.
Your maintenance budget, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, just under my maintenance and which is my sixteen hundreds. And so um I was thinking about that and I do a lot of stuff out of those accounts that are really more like consumable supplies. That really wouldn't be technically made like my, if I need to pick up a hose, if I need to pick up washers or screws, I mean. Flashlights, any of those kinds of weird things that happen literally almost on a day to day basis. Um I'd want to back those out and do them in the supplies category. So that repairs maintenance would literally be repairs maintenance. And then the the personnel side, I was thinking about quite a bit too, because the MOU states Nick would be Dave's employee, which I get, because it would be maintenance. But then does that mean he comes under union? Does that mean he's on, I mean, it kinda opens up a whole different thing if he's under Dave's department. It, cause we're not union out there, we're not on the steps, we're not on any of that stuff. It kinda opens that up and his housing is part of his employment, is that. Right. It just kinda opened up a whole lot of things. And the other thing I really wanted to, and we'll talk about all this tonight, I'm sure, is I really wanna keep the grounds portion. I wanna keep the the mowing, the fertilizing, the, I don't, I don't wanna have to. When we go over and find three sprinkler heads broken, put in a repair order to go get three sprinkler heads really quick while we're waiting to water the lawn. If those kinds of little things, we just need to do and do it quick and get it over.
But that, but that's the whole purpose of the facilities. And the whole purpose of this, for one, like I told you before, is to let you spend more time on. Getting the facilities filled with, you know, clients and to. Work on grants and and so that wouldn't be your concern anymore. And that's, the reason is if you keep holding on to one part or the other, it's not gonna work. And it's either gotta be all or nothing and. These guys, these guys know how to take care.
I know.
You can look outside.
No, I.
And and so you just gotta be able to let that go and let them do their job and. You know, it's good to talk about those things, but you know, if a, if. If a sprinkler head's broke, they fix it right then, you know, and so, you know.
And I think actually, you know, with Dave's preventative maintenance program and everything else, I think, you know, you might have, hopefully have less of some of those things. But I think the idea that he's going.
Right.
Commissioner Albertson's going is, we don't want you having to deal with broken sprinklers anymore.
No, I get it, no, I like the idea.
Really often do, and he has a big problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if you have something out there that's broke that needs fixed immediately, you call Dave. Don't go through the, you know, if there's a water hole somewhere that shouldn't be flowing.
Right.
You call Dave and say, hey, we got an emergency out here.
So we can't just tell Nick to go plug that leak? I mean, that's what's kinda, so I have to call.
Well.
It just kind of, and what if Dave's not around or what if Jeremy's not around or business or?
Well, I think.
It just kinda.
If they, if if Nick's there, I don't see there's anything prohibiting you from saying, Nick, there's a, there's a leak and the water's flooding everywhere.
Yeah.
Because I, I mean, like we.
And then calling Dave while Nick is plugging the hole, I mean, like I, I don't think there's anything preventing you from doing that.
No, and the thing is, that happens here, I mean.
Yeah.
We have something and and.
We've been in the, in the basement working on the sewer system and that thing goes gablooey, so.
And so you just have to roll with it, nobody's gonna get their feelings hurt, uh you tell Nick to fix a broken pipe because it's broken.
Should be one that, where you know, shut the pop off.
Where we'll run into trouble though, is if you tell Nick to go do something that isn't part of the plan.
And that's.
And.
Yeah.
And then, then there's gonna be an accident.
Yeah.
So if it's an emergency, I think that's one thing, but if it's not an emergency, you gotta let this fall to the.
Oh, yeah, no, I totally, yeah, I totally agree with that.
I think that's where we're trying to get it.
Yeah.
Cause you're really gonna have, most of the time, you're gonna have more than just Nick out there working. You're gonna get minimum of two employees extra. And so hopefully by the time a year or two goes by, all the preventative maintenance that they've done. This kind of emergency happens less frequently.
Right.
And so um.
Get on to somebody at the grandiose place.
The big new indoor, maybe, okay, sorry, multi-use center, okay, yeah.
And I, I think this is the first step to get to that.
Yeah.
And because we all wanna see it happen.
Yeah.
And it needs to happen, I mean, we have to start. Investing in those things with our fervor.
Yeah.
And you know, how we're working on with OFA, you know.
Oh, yeah, the projects.
And trying to get these projects, trying to get finances and and those things, and so I think this is the first step to getting there. So you're gonna have to let some things go on.
You know, it's hard for me, I like buying all the flower baskets and all that kinda stuff. And I still.
I don't think there's gonna be a problem.
No, if he buys flowers all the time, he'd do it, oh, no. Might be, but no, no, I, I think it, no, I think ideally, the plan is good, I think it's just working out the little stuff.
You know, you wanna plant flower baskets, plant flower baskets, you know, but you know, the thing is, is that we don't pay you to plant flower baskets.
Oh, no, I just buy them, I don't plant them. No, no, no.
Yeah, we can uh, we can let you guys work this out.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Sorry. I have a feeling tonight's meeting might go on, you know.
I know, I talked to some, yeah.
You know, and.
I think it's just verbiage, I think is what.
And you know, we were, you know, my suggestions were just to try and make sure that there was some uh leniency there and some. That you got, you could work more openly with Dave.
Yeah.
And that it wasn't, you know, something that was rigid and that it was, we want a more robust system where you can actually work with Dave.
And I do work well with Dave.
Right, you do, and and I know that, so I I just, my thing was, I didn't want it to be this rigid. Relationship where you have to go to the board to get their approval to change the light bulb and I, and I think that.
The thing is, is that once we get what verbiage we think in there.
Right.
And two months come down the road and something's not working, we can amend this.
Sure, yeah.
And so it's gonna be kind of a living document for a little while before we get to where we wanna be.
And honestly, I, I really do think this, because this is something that's happened here. There will, there will come a point when you don't, you will not notice any more light bulbs that are out. And if you notice a light bulb that is out.
Right.
It's already on their list.
Yeah.
And they're already, they've already got the light bulb and, you know, on its way.
Yeah.
And and I think through the preventative maintenance program that Dave's implemented here, it's really helped us here at the courthouse. I think that you will see a lot of those problems go away, so.
I'm off for the bathrooms going away, I mean bathroom problems going away, yikes, okay, yes, no. I think ideally it can. With discussion.
You guys have that discussion tonight, and I think that's honestly what we need right now at this point, is the fair boards, the fair boards.
Yeah. On the MOU though, didn't it say something at the bottom, I have my copy with me about um. Something along the lines of major repairs, it would go to the board of commissioners as opposed to the fair board?
Let's see. Uh, maintenance requirements, Lake County uh determined by the Lake County Board of Commissioners and consultation with County Facilities Manager. Oh, I see, here, no, it's in the maintenance authority. Uh, the Lake County Facilities Manager will report to and take direction from the Lake County Board of Commissioners. That's Dave though. I don't see. Anything going to us. Unless it's the maintenance, well, the facilities manager reports to us.
Right. And and so does that mean?
Do you want him to report?
Larger projects need to be cleared by you guys as opposed to the fair board?
Well, a lot of the really big projects need to be updated with us anyway, but.
Well, yeah, yeah.
How is, how is that working right now, like it, just like the electrical on RV?
Yeah.
Had to come to us anyways.
It came to the fair board.
Yeah, but then it came to us, we approved the money, right?
No, uh-uh.
Oh.
Just because of C R. Traditionally, she'll run projects through the fair board because they're independent of us.
So we, we could change that verbiage.
Yeah.
Tonight.
We'll just say, yeah, okay.
And.
I think, I think that sentence is already a true statement under her role, do you have a job to do this?
Yeah, that's his job, he reports to us.
Yeah, Dave does.
But um. I guess, you know, and he still needs to be working with the fair board.
Right, so I guess what I'm wondering is if I go out there and get a grant for something, say, I'm looking for grants for vaulted bathrooms right now, and so. If I get a grant for a vaulted bathroom, then the fair board signs it, all that, you, normally it would just be I did it and then I go out and get a contractor and. Figure out how to get it done, so in thi- in this case, would it be? In a sense, I get the grant and then Dave would handle?
No, that's all new construction, because that's a grant from the fair board.
Right.
He, he won't be building the, their, theirs is maintenance.
Okay, just maintenance workers.
He's not building the new.
Okay, okay, I was just, okay.
It's.
Okay, good.
I mean, you'll still get the contractor.
Okay.
And you'll be.
Well, I don't care if he does it, that would be kinda handy, if I just say, here's the grant, here's the requirements, take it with you, but.
It's just.
But, yeah, because he does, he handles all of our.
Yeah.
Contracts.
The Lake County Facilities Manager will be in charge of all the maintenance of the fairgrounds and all personnel carrying out the maintenance. Lake County Facilities Manager will report and take directions from the Lake County Board of Commissioners.
That's true.
It is, that is true.
He doesn't wanna have to take direction from two different boards.
Entities.
No, that's true, yeah.
See, that's what, that's what we've got to.
But we want the maintenance to be not something that you have to worry about. But the, the fair board still has the ability, if there's maintenance and things that they need to have identified. Then then they can send one, send a report order to him.
Okay. No, I'm getting it, I like the idea, I do a bunch, so.
The thing, the thing is, is like Mr. Schoenberger stated, you know, we can't be going between two ports.
No.
Because it's not gonna work. Because you're gonna have hole in different directions and and that sort of thing, and that's what I'm trying to prevent. And so whatever the verbiage is, is totally fine with me as long as.
Facility manager is working for the board of commissioners.
Right, yep.
And.
But we're, we're entering an MOU in partnership with the fairgrounds and that way the fairgrounds, you guys work with Dave, but the maintenance itself. We're taking.
So what I put in my maintenance budget for this coming year, I need to take out those consumables that I usually do on a daily basis.
Like?
Yeah, I, I mean.
Like this washers and stuff?
Well, so, well, I was just making lists because I just know.
I, I think it'll be.
But there's just tons of them, I mean, the Christmas lights, the wash spray, the duct tape, the spray paint, I mean, it's all those little things that we pick up to do.
But that's already under your maintenance budget, right?
Well, yeah, but those are consumable supplies, so really I just, I would, in my case, I would like to pull that out and do a supplies category. Which would be, which would be mine for this kind of stuff.
And have an actual supplies. Yeah, line and you would pull those things out of that.
Yeah, cause I put everything in repairs maintenance right now, I don't have separate supplies other than janitor.
I would recommend you do that in any case, just so that it's easier to tr- track.
Yeah.
You know, the ma- what's actually going into maintenance and what is the consumable.
Now, you may buy wash spray, but you, the maintenance is that it, that needs to be sprayed.
Yeah, so that's under maintenance, that will be solar lights.
And you mentioned.
So that's getting really down in the nitty gritty.
Yeah, okay, so like work gloves, I mean, there's all kinds of little things, who's gonna?
Well, now work gloves, we're getting into the area of doing maintenance, Tommy, we're trying to.
I just wanna be clear.
If you need work gloves, we can get that through the maintenance, that should stay in maintenance.
I, I think it, I think it all, I think it all should stay under the maintenance deal, it'll just be under your expenditure, expenditures.
But you should get purposes of work gloves.
We'll go over this with.
Of the maintenance, I mean.
So we're, so we're both gonna be pulled out of my budget, we're both gonna be doing stuff out of my budget, I mean.
Out of your maintenance.
Right.
Dave's, Dave's gotta be able to, if you need wash spray.
Yeah.
To go get wash spray.
In the same way Tom and him work out in the same budget with the airport. And so they, they do the same thing, in that, in that respect.
So I know we love to buy local and we do as much as possible, but I. Am kind of frugal, I guess is the word for it, but I buy where the best deal is and in volume, so I make my budget last a lot longer.
Yeah.
So what I think you need to do is, Dave's out of, go to the airport, right?
That's where, yeah, I think so.
But.
Yeah.
If you, to get, what would be great is if you and Dave can discuss what we're talking about right now.
It's wearing the weeds.
We can, not in a meeting.
And the, and the thing is, is that it'd be great if you could hook up with him today.
Okay. Okay, oh, before the meeting?
And then bring that to the meeting tonight, so we have all this. Coming up.
Okay.
Yeah, because I think some of these things, we can't really answer, right?
The thing is, is that it, as you know, you can work with Dave and you guys can work this out, we don't need to be.
Okay.
Doing this.
Okay.
And we don't wanna be directing you on how you build your budget either, so.
Okay, okay, got it, okay, I will.
Right.
I'm, I'm trying to make it clean.
I know.
And this isn't making it clean, this is, this is us starting to get into your guys' work and I don't wanna micromanage your work.
Okay, okay.
And so.
Not the maintenance.
So if you can talk to Dave, that'd be great.
Okay, I will, I'll make it a point today.
Thank you, Ron.
You bitch.
The uh next item, we have. Um going back to the first part, Troy Armstrong, variance and para- for the paramedics. We wanna hit that real quick, we've got a timed item at ten o'clock, so just knock out a few of these things for discussion. Um it's on agenda for tomorrow for uh action consideration, but. Uh basically Troy reached out to me, they just need to be able to have a little bit of. Uh they need to have an exception, if they, we use the word variance with O H A and how. What they consider a quality level of service and everything for when these ambulances go out on run. Um right now, we are just asking the state and writing O H A. That if we could have consideration for a paramedic um being considered uh for advanced life support. So that uh, because right now the rules are they need to have advanced life support and a qualified driver on the ambulances for, in order for them to run. And the A S A number four. So for this ambulance service area, they're asking for a variance from O H A so that a paramedic would actually be considered. An advanced life support and that way that paramedic can serve and they can still go on runs. It's something that we deal with, with a lot of these smaller counties. Because we just work, work with volunteers for the most part. Because we just work with volunteers for the most part, and even though we have a paramedic that can go on these, it's still getting the advanced life support and everything else. You just can't get all the the people you need in order to meet the requirements the state puts on us.
Great, great, great.
Anyway, good. Alright.
Uh, no, uh, so currently, how many people go on the ambulance?
Two.
But they have to be ALS on. They they can't be a paramedic.
That's what they're, that's what the state's requirement is.
Okay, so we're, the variance is asking for a paramedic instead?
Yep, that's it.
I'm I'm fine with it, but I think we need to change the verbiage in the first line. Um, what is it? The Lake County Board of Commissioners do not object to the variance. I would take that, do not object, and put in, so we support a variance. Because that's kind of mumbled.
Turn it into a button.
Okay. Sounds good. Alright, um, any other discussion? We'll just move on to the next, uh. Uh, Melanie, uh, door locks.
So I would like to propose an upgrade to our door lock system. Um. At that time, I would also like to include some requested doors from other departments. Um, this is the same um quote from Basin Telecom that I presented earlier or a blank present. But you guys wanted me to assure you that there weren't any competitors in the area. I asked someone in Lebanon, which is the closest provider, and they are not interested. I included that email in your packet. Um, the, there are two providers in Portland, and they were not interested in coming to your place for you. Um, so I can assure you, there is no competition and that we can still use rule eight.
So this was one of my concerns. Uh, I wanted to see that if we could get three bids out there, just to be transparent with the public that we were not just uh pulling down one business, and I think Melanie did a good job of looking and trying to determine that we really have the current uh company that is willing to help us with the affairs. So appreciate that.
Also, I saw us, um, kinda looked over the bid and I said it seemed very fair, if that's also reassuring. Um, and they had great things to say about the work from Basin Telecommunication.
So, can you kind of brief us on like our chronic synonymous or our on the sobriety stuff that goes on downstairs that you were going to have? That make make it so they can only come in at certain hours?
Yeah, so we can already do that. What's great about this new cloud software? Dave and I can both um have accessed the lock system. Just in case our IT support fella is out that day, we can get on and have access. You know, we've had some glitches with daylight savings time. If the power goes out, sometimes it resets it and it reverses back to a different schedule. So it'll be nice to have more people able to use it. Um. But it's also something about the system. Like, all of the locks are on the same um circuit right now. So like we unlock the doors for like planning commission, which is an issue. Then the one down here is unlocked, these two are both unlocked. And so the new software will allow us to pinpoint which door. So it'll be super nice um to say, okay, so once I was gonna use an unworryable hall between this time and this time, we can have it unlocked. And not have to like issue a key or for planning commission.
So we're as the first stay locked.
And all the other ones stay locked, so the jails not trying to watch the guys and ladies upstairs, but and do security. Like, they won't have to be watching as many doors, and so it'll help help with that too. You know, because sometimes they get frustrated.
Well, and then another frustration is we give somebody a key and then it doesn't get returned, so that would stop that.
Yeah, it'd be super helpful.
I'm good with it. It's perfect. It sounds good. Um. Uh, does anyone need a quick break or anything? We've got a timed item at ten o'clock, so we could take a short five-minute break if anyone needs any time. Are they calling?
She is.
She is calling.
Well, sort of. She's gonna remote in. I'm trying not to use the polycom system or that. Yeah.
Okay, I'll be there. Well, she's not here yet, so.
She is.
Is it Sharon, lady?
Hi, Sharon. Hi, how are you? Good, how are you? Good, you guys actually meet in person, wow.
We're old school.
Yeah, no, I love it. So county board that I'm on here will be remotely.
Yeah. Um. Real quick, you guys wanna, or actually, since we have Sharon. I don't know if anyone else, was anyone else going to be joining us today? Is Amy going to join us or anything?
Oh, Amy Hutchinson?
Yeah.
No, she spoke very highly of Sharon and the work that she's done for her though. Uh, and she's recommended considering her for what you guys are working for.
And just so you know, she's done a whole lot with Outback Retirement up north.
Oh.
Because I'm on that board, and also I have a grant with her with Ford Family for technical assistance that I've been saving for when we start doing the bid, since we got the plan done. I was gonna save her for the first part of new projects. So anyway, I like.
Hi, Sharon.
Yes, it is. Hi, Sharon.
Hi.
Yeah, okay, um. Now, why don't we just get going and then uh we'll, we'll get you going a little bit early. Uh, but uh it'll, it's really good to have you. Um, even if it is virtual, uh. But uh, yeah, I'll uh give you the floor if you'd like to just go ahead and make your presentation.
Oh, okay, I didn't prepare anything formal. I, uh, thank you for reaching out to me. So basically, I might, I work out of Bend, Oregon, but I work in rural communities, as you guys well know, that could use one example of that. So I uh, I I do a lot of uh capacity building, uh capital campaigns, and then proposal development for public and private sector partners. So the biggest public sector project that I work on continuously is for the Jefferson County School District in Madras. Just to give you an idea of that, and I have a lot of experience working with uh Oregon State Parks and all their funding opportunities, which I think uh some of your, some of the original work that Ronnie and I were looking at for the fairgrounds, uh potentially, you know, that is a funding source for for what you were trying to do at the fairgrounds. And then I don't know about your public safety needs, and I do, I just checked with the, with a colleague and and apparently there's quite a bit of funding available for public um safety right now, and I don't know what you guys' needs are around that arena. But is that right? It was the fairground and uh public safety were the two key areas?
Yeah, so those were the top ones. My thought, I I guess I got a couple of questions too, um.
Sure.
I'm Mark Albertson, and so, um. Some of the questions I have is, we're in great need of grant writing here, as you well know. And the the problem is, is that right now our department heads do most of the grant writing for themselves. And they're skilled in their line of work, but maybe not necessarily in the grant writing world. And I I believe that we leave thousands, if not millions of dollars out on the on the table without tapping into that, and so we wanted to call you because, you know, you're, you can come highly regarded to us. And I guess one of my questions is, is that whatever the county might need and whatever department, whether it be, you know, the Sheriff's Department or the fairgrounds. Do we need to bring something to you or, and how do you get paid?
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, um, that I work on an hourly rate to answer that question for you. So I do the work and then I bill, you know, at the end of every month on ongoing projects or with clients that I've worked with forever. And then, um, I think that the way to approach the funding opportunities is twofold. One, you know, a a discussion on what the needs are, right? You know, whether it's police department, fairgrounds or whatever, identifying those top five or ten because I know you guys have work plans. And then you guys get, uh, me, county departments, you as public officials, you get notifications, I get notifications to my different networks. And then we come together, you know, on when those opportunities align with what you want to pursue or not, and you make a decision. So as an example, let's just say we were gonna go after funding through uh the the county opportunity grant. We take a look at the application and do a preliminary scoring, you know, it's like how how far do you guys, how competitive is your project on the grid? Have a conversation with the funding source and then determine if you want to invest the, you know, twenty, forty hours, whatever it would take to uh to pursue that funding opportunity. And I uh often on projects, what I'll do is, like I did with Ronnie with the fairgrounds, is we quickly, I just just develop kind of the the scope of work, you know, these are the twenty things that need to be accomplished over this period of time. This is what we estimated would cost, break it out in phases over time period, and then kind of align potential funding sources with that. And then that kind of helps, the budget kind of, it it's a real rough draft, but it helps guide our thinking and our thought process. And public sector grants, just to give you an idea, that they're different than private sector, and they can often be quite tedious in the the time it takes to assemble all the different pieces of it. State grants aren't as bad as federal grants. A typical federal grant can, uh, when you're developing a new project, can take up to forty hours. And then once you have it, the broader, I don't wanna say it's a broadened plate, but it is, it's like, think of it like a template. How you describe the project, what it is you're gonna do, uh, the basic working budget, those pieces, then sequential funding opportunities following that become a lot easier, because then you're just kind of plugging in information and and updating it to that particular RFP.
And so like with, many of the grants, of course, have matches, and so um, you know, some of the matches are very high, and so is there some way we can rate the grant that way where if the ma- if the match is too much, we just drop it, or what, how do you go about that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question, and that's where I have found that having a budget, you know, a a real rough budget for each of the projects helps you make that decision. Because often, not necessarily public to public, but sometimes you can use state money against a federal match, or you can pursue economic development funding, private sector funding to uh as your matching fund. So that should be part of the decision tree when you, when we decide whether or not you're gonna pursue that particular funding source.
Very good.
Yeah. Now, please, please recognize that all these comments I'm making are assuming we're not in the pandemic. Because you know, that has totally turned a lot of things uh
I did.
Yeah, in a different shape, as you want to know.
She said, assuming we're not in the pandemic.
So, when is that gonna happen?
I think you're looking at it. I'm I'm just adding an example, the local government grant program is, was canceled this year. So, you know, that's just one example, because they didn't think there would be any lottery funds available. Uh, also, a lot of, of the state of Oregon funding opportunities for things like the fairgrounds have been deferred until twenty-two.
So is there other grants available for like parks and rec and the fairgrounds that we can tap into?
Yes, and I, and I'll be honest with you, you know, I I just started doing a little snooping around on that or research this morning. So right now, they did open up, uh, the, there is uh, one opportunity, but it's due on April first. For more recreational facilities and camping facilities or city parks, that kind of thing, and as Ronnie well knows, we kind of re-explored that before, and if we were gonna do something with the fairgrounds, I don't know what if I haven't camped at your fairgrounds for over a year, so I don't know, you know, what your needs are right now. You know, if it's, if it's for campground improvements, it might get, we can't do anything like for the buildings.
They cover vaulted bathrooms.
Commissioner, uh, just, just a thought, but you know, we've got campsites at the ski area. And there's been some talk of developing some of those to have water or septic. I don't love that. We're not talking very many sites, but, you know, it it's a future plan, so we, maybe we could talk about that. See where that's at.
We could buy Sir Rockman's Park two for the community.
Well, for three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Nice try.
Yeah. Where, where, where are you, if I may ask? Where are, where are we in the infrastructure improvements at the fairgrounds? Is there anything that's changed, Ronnie, in the last couple of years?
Um, I'm just waiting for the final part of the master plan now. I finally got that funded, so we should have that by March or April.
Okay.
Then we'll be ready with the first multi-use indoor arena center.
Okay, so indoor arena, and then you still, you're still trying to do improvements for the camping area too, right?
Uh, yep, but we're in the process of getting that done now.
Oh, good. Okay, I just. Do you guys have other specific questions or need or thoughts or?
I don't know if I have, I have a million things, but um, I think what we need to do as a board is probably create a liaison to the grant thing, and then.
Yeah.
Put a, put a level of how we will, of importance on how we want different projects. And then contact you with those projects and see what it's gonna cost us, see what our match is gonna be, scope of work, and then um go from there. Do you guys?
What was, what was your charge again?
Yeah, I work, I work on an hourly rate and I work at ninety-five an hour in my view, yeah, and I charge more in the valley.
Okay.
And and yes, I would totally support uh what you've just recommended. And the the one uh word of caution is, a lot of these public sect, at least public sector funding, while even private, those opportunities are open right now. You have more than, you have more than now, between now and in the next like sixty days than you normally have in the rest of the year. So just be mindful of that. If there was anything you were looking at, watch those deadlines.
So, just real quickly, um. Other, on the, some of the grants, Bank of the West is, has a grant available that it says supporting nonprofit organizations dedicated to improving quality of life, particularly for low and moderate income individuals and communities. So, up in Northland County, um, Christmas Valley Water District is in great need of um revitalizing their water uh infrastructure. Um, is that something that we could look at also?
The the what, the needs of the, do the water improvements or the funding opportunities through Bank of West?
Both.
Yeah, well, uh, yes, of course, and you know, and if you, and as an example, if we were going to pursue funding with Bank of the West, what I would suggest we do is sit down with the local manager. I work, I worked with them on a few projects at John Day, and then I think they donated to the library two years ago. But, uh, you know, ask them if it's even a fit for them because some, some corporations will not allow public sector requests.
So they're not like a city, so they're, they would be under
They're a special tax district, don't they?
Yes.
Very special district, yeah, that's what I thought, just like some of our irrigation districts out here in Bend, yeah. So, yeah, we can, you know, we can certainly talk to them and, and who who's managing that process? Is it the local community? Do they have a volunteer board?
They they have a board and then they have a manager over the, her name's Erica, I'm not positive what her name is, but I can get back to you offline on that and see. And I need to talk to our board if we would help maybe paying your costs for that. But
Okay.
Um, because they don't have a whole lot of money. And that's
No.
So, I mean, I I just threw that out there as something that
Yeah.
But
Because I know that EMS services out there, when I was working with Ronnie on Outback, um, you know, that was another huge issue.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we discussed earlier as a board. You know, the needs from our EMS to virtually everything out here. If we can start, you know, priorit- prioritizing everything and then working on maybe possibly using you to help us with those would be great.
Yeah. Yeah, well, thank you for uh your interest and for your questions there. Uh, other, you know, so probably for you guys, um, as county officials is that if you do want to engage my services, we can just get a a contract written and so that when you're ready to go, you know, we're ready to move forward. Sometimes that can, with a public agency, that can take a little time to move it through your um, your system.
Right.
I carry all the liability requirements and everything for a public agency, so that's not an issue.
So do you have an MOU set up already?
Yeah, I have, I have a a contract and I, my personal business contract that I use. Some public agencies prefer to use theirs. Um, it's up to you guys. Now, when I did the work with the library, I was working through the Friends Group, so that was not an issue.
So can you send that information to Melanie?
Of course I can. Okay. All right, any anything, uh, was there any other opportunities that are, that you had noted that are quickly approaching deadline?
Um, there's going to be the Trails Park and Rec one, that's April 1st, correct?
Yeah.
So, um, I have a whole list of stuff that I need to go over and find out what the dates are that maybe we can work on.
Yeah, most of the OPRD ones are due in, uh, usually it's early April, which the trail one is, and then the the other one for uh if there was any recreational facilities. And I I don't know, Ronnie, for the fairgrounds, did you secure any private sector funding?
No, not for the projects yet. They wanted to see a master plan, a completed master plan.
Right, that's what I figured, so. But we had developed a real quick, uh, you know, potential prospect list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I've been keeping in touch with TFF and Meyer and OCF.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I, Meyer just rolled out their community building program yesterday, and I don't see a fit there at all. It's all around equity and underserved. DEI is the big thing right now.
So what what is that acronym?
Oh, that's diversity and equity. So basically, you know, if you're working towards empowering underserved communities and you're and you're enacting change, uh, that that's what's of interest right now. And that was just exasperated by the pandemic because it demonstrated that the gap in in our our communities, you know, with under, with the different populations and minorities and poverty and some of those issues.
It's a big part of the um grants and everything else now, so.
Yeah.
Alrighty, um, I have questions. This sounds really good.
Okay.
Thank you very much for visiting with us today.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, you guys. It's so good to see everyone. I I look forward to uh an another visit to Lakeview in the near future when things open up again.
Well, we're open.
We're open.
Come on down.
I have my RV and I'm always on the road camping if I'm, even if I'm working, I love it, so, yeah. My RV and my bicycle, I'm ready to go.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
All right, you guys, thank you. And please, uh, you know, if there's something we need to pursue, that's due uh April 1st, we got to get rolling.
All right, thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Sharon.
All right, you guys, good to see you, Ronnie. Bye.
So also, just through thought, you know, the fairgrounds has the Friends of the Fair and Roundup as a nonprofit that we started that she can work through, just like she did with Friends of the Library. So if there's grants out there that that don't do government entity like, um, oh, who's the one I really like? Anyway, but they, I, they, they have a real strong policy of who owns the building. And so, and they don't do municipalities or government or any of that. They only do 501(c)(3). So I couldn't get them to help with a new building at all. Who was that? Shoot, anyway.
I would under the Friends of
Well, no, because it's still a county-owned building. If it would have been something, it would have to be a 501(c), whoever owned the building is their final criteria. So they they couldn't do it, but no, shoot, now I can't think. Hi. Anyway, but we also have that avenue for fairgrounds, we have Friends of the Fair and Roundup as a nonprofit that we started.
Makes my wheels turn. There's a lot of opportunity that we're not taking advantage of, which is why we brought this whole subject up. That is opportunity throughout the county.
You know, the thing is, is the $25 an hour. And you think about it, if we employed somebody full-time, the cost would far outweigh what we'd chart, what we'd pay to her. And I I just, I think we need to really set something up to start focusing on this.
I think you guys should consider using my economic development dollars to leverage towards her fees. I think it would be soothing.
Which is exactly what it is.
Unless it's department-specific, you know, like equipment for the sheriff's office or something. But for like general community projects, I think, you know, the community benefit would be huge.
I mean, because like, well, using the sheriff's office, you know, we might not be able to fund an employee, but, you know, the the school resource officer is from a grant. Um, but the materials, um, equipment, there's all kinds of that that could save the county thousands of dollars by giving you a grant for that. I didn't know if you guys wanted, what did you guys think about having somebody, one of us, as a designated liaison to the grants?
Yeah, do we want to do it designated or do we want to have it where each commissioner, one of those ones where all the commissioners have access?
That that can be fine too. But I think at the very least, what we need to do so all three of us aren't contacting Sharon that we used her
Right.
is funnel it through
I have a point person.
Funnel it through Melanie or, see what I'm saying? And so we're not doing the same job over and over again.
Maybe, you know, I don't know, with, one of you guys, if one of you guys are up for it, be the liaison temporarily in or whatever, which is saying you're the liaison. And then whoever is the liaison, work with Melanie through this person or whatever. That way, there's just, just a point person, we won't, we won't be confluting things too much by multiple opinions. What do you guys think?
Well, one thought process is whoever the economic development person is, is also the liaison for for this. Or if we need to split it up, one's the economic development, the other one's the the grant person. You know, one of the other two is the grant person. That way, information being shared. I I don't know. Uh, kind of makes sense for the economic development person, which we all are. But, you know, you got the lead on it, Commissioner Alves, and you got to tell us to be the grant. So you're working. I mean, I'm, I'm game for anything. I just, I'm just trying to streamline it, so. You know, if one commissioner is pretty hot and heavy on a certain grant, I don't want to stop them from working on it.
Yeah.
But on the other hand is, is that I don't want to muddy the water with all three of us, you know?
I think as long as we're having these work sessions and we're talking about these things, I think we're, we'd be in good shape.
Yeah.
As long as we're communicating with each other on, you know, what the projects are that we're working on, especially if we're working on big grants.
Yeah, I like the idea of using Melanie to help us out as well. Are you good with that?
I prefer preform Joe Judy's as a sign.
Good, she'll take.
Without your point, mind you. I'm just, I'm just trying to streamline it. I I really think it's something that we need to
So, so here's the deal, uh, our, before talking to her, um, we were thought, talking about potentially having a grant writing person, a paid position, right? You know, a, you know, a need more than, so than a want. The need, if we're ever going to move on for, uh, you know, Park and Rec, all these other projects that we got going on that require outside funding. So, you know, taking on somebody like, um, Miss Lady is a pretty good idea. Yeah, I think so too. Because it is, like she says, these next two months are the key months versus the rest of the year. So liaison wise, I'm good with it. One or the other? I think the economic development person wants to do that. Essentially the liaison for this. I just don't know how spread out we want to do it.
Right. The thing is though, is you know, it's not just going to be under economic development, even though they're all put together. I mean, your liaisons for all different kinds of things, which are also potential, we open to get grants for each one of your deals. Um, maybe the, maybe the thing would be is, like you were saying, you know, if you find the grant for a certain project that you're liaison to, you bring it before us in a work session and then pull.
Yeah, I think it's really, we we should be doing that anyway.
And and just like with you, Barry, you know, out at the the Ski Hill, you know, that's part of the economic development. But you're also the chair of the Ski Hill. You know what the needs are, you know what those guys want out there. Ronnie, working on the fairgrounds. And so I think maybe the best way to do it would be using all of our skills to get the grants specifically for your, whoever you're working on. And then funnel it through, you know, Melanie and then, you know, bring it up before work session, hey, I'm working on this grant, just like that one I was talking about, the water deal.
Oh, right.
I I just found that this one, and I think it would work.
Melanie, you have a question?
Well, I, I want to make sure you guys are working with the department heads though, and not micromanaging them. Be like, hey, I saw this grant, this could be great for your department. And then maybe where the men, that they consider it and working with Sharon. Uh, just so you're not going over the top of
Exactly. So, and I don't want to do that.
That's a perfect point. I was just about to kind of just say, you know, it's great, you know, we have a point person or a liaison commissioner to, you know, kind of work with Sharon and with our grant writer. But we don't want to get it to the point where we silo ourselves as commissioners either. And we're, we're all off doing our own thing, and we all got our own little grant or something we're working with Sharon on, that we have to work with the department heads, that we're actually doing this for, and we work together as a board so that we all kind of know.
So, just like Ronnie, she's Sharon already, I didn't even know that.
Oh, yeah.
Until, this, till today. And so, yeah, I do not want to hamstring us in any way. That's a great point. Um, maybe what we can do is send this grant stuff that we get sometimes to every department head and say, hey, look over this material and make sure that I'm not missing anything in your department where we could use Sharon. And then it just comes back to us.
So, so I'm just playing this out a little bit. Let's say a department head sees a grant they like. Before they can utilize somebody like Miss Lady, they need to come for us to want to go for the grant so that we, uh, are using economic development dollars or something to help pay for that. Otherwise, it's got to come out of their own budget.
Right. And then we got to be careful of the matches because at first, sometimes the grant looks really good, but our match is going to be 50 grand. Where are we going to get that? How are we going to fund that, you know, grant? And so, well, in that case, you know, if I were an apartment head, I suppose I'd like to have a point commissioner to go to. So, you know, to at least kind of, you know, and then that commissioner, we would know, okay, we got to get this on the agenda. And that way, it's the commissioner puts it on the agenda with that department head or whoever else. I guess, I guess what would work would be, would be whoever's your department head's commissioner.
Oh, that's true. Go to your liaison, there you go.
And then say, hey, I have this grant.
Yep.
Has to be wrong with it. And otherwise
Yeah.
Otherwise it's
It's a good process.
Otherwise, it's going to be, the one commissioner would be
Yep.
swamped.
Right.
There's no way in hell that one of us could be doing all of that.
And as your lead, and as a department head, you have your liaison. If there's something your department needs, you would go to your liaison, so, so that's
And I guess one thing we need to make sure we're bringing up to our department heads is seek these grants. Seek, make sure that you guys are, you know
Or if you have a project that you need, you might need a grant for, seek that out.
And that, we give them the leeway to do their job. Because the last thing any of us commissioners want to do is micromanage our, our leadership department heads. Um, but it's not productive in any way, shape, or form. And so, um, I'm glad you guys brought that up, and it's a good conversation, you know. And so, and I think it would work way smoother if whoever you're the liaison for, they bring that to you and then you run with the ball.
And all three of us are really good.
Yeah, and and then that way, hey, if I need some help on this project, we can help, right?
You know? And that way, it's not just of one commissioner going to Sharon. It's, it's the commissioner and that department head and then bringing it to the board. It's, it's the commissioner and that department head and then bringing it to the board before we act on something. So, that would be very appropriate, I think. Okay. Good.
Good discussion.
Yeah.
Very good.
And I, I'm, I'm really glad that we're. You know, Melanie brought Sharon into this and I'm very thankful. Because that, that could be the start of something really good for us, I think.
In the meantime, we're not having to add a position.
No.
Right.
Let's see how it works.
Well, the thing is, is that. You know, you hire somebody, by the time you have all their benefits and perks and all that, you're looking at a hundred grand. And. If we can get by on twenty or thirty thousand using Sharon. You're saving a lot of money.
The, uh, commissioner, the hundred grand comment that made for the nuisance officer is around town a little bit.
Oh.
I think, uh, people misinterpreted that.
Yeah, we're not paying someone.
No, I'm starting salary of a hundred grand.
No.
And we wanna make sure that we, when we say that, that we're including all benefits.
Yeah, the benefits, the added cost to the county for having a full-time employee, even if all they're making is forty and sixty thousand.
We've got a little feedback on that.
Yeah, I do too.
It was not starting salary.
I, I, I never, I never said that. I never said that, to make it clear, is. I, I presented the town with the bins. Nuisance officers' wages, but by the time you add benefits, retirement, you're knocked on the door of a hundred times. And that is exactly what they said. So they got it spread any other way. It wasn't paid.
Yeah, I know it. I, you, when you, when you go down that daisy chain, you know, and people.
Yeah.
Get things messed up. You can't really hold the first, the messenger, the original messenger accountable for how the.
I, I took the paperwork proving what the. And I said it in a public meeting, wages are.
We're saying it again.
Fifty some dollars.
Hell louder. Yep, we're setting the record straight and no worries, so.
Yeah, I hadn't heard that part, so.
Yeah. No worries at all.
Or fake news, or fake news.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the camera.
So, um, real quick, before we take a break, I think we can rocket through these and just before our time item at eleven. ASA committee applications, we have five. You have Jamie Roscoe, Judy Clark, Timothy Gallagher. Troy Armstrong and John Shine. Um. Did Daniel ever send in the? No, Daniel doesn't have, I don't think Daniel has to. It's easy administrator request. This is for the ambulance service area advisory committee.
Oh, okay.
That we're supposed to have one and, uh, we're trying to get the, get the band back together, so to speak. So we can get the four ASAs all talking to each other and working together and, um. So, anyway, um, one of the first steps in making some changes and updating our plan, which the state has told us. That we're supposed to do every five years, um, according to them, but they haven't reached out to us for over twenty. It's been nearly thirty years actually since we've updated the ambulance service area plans for the county. So, uh, I personally feel like the state's dropped the ball for the majority on this, uh, because they weren't talking to us. Uh, for over twenty years. So anyway, we're just trying to get that together, but it's contingent based on the ordinance that we had in place. That we have an ambulance service area advisory committee that represents all the different ASAs. We're all quick, right? And, and on that, you also have your public health. Uh, you have, uh, a physician for the north end and the south end. Uh, I think Tim, uh, Timothy Gallagher, Dr. Gallagher is, uh, one of them and I. I believe Dr. Ground may be submitting an application too. I'm not entirely sure. Um, but yeah, to try and get this committee back on its feet, a lot of people have. Come and gone since the original advisor committee, because he didn't active.
So. You know, if you don't have an answer, it's fine, but I'm just asking a question. With the Christmas Valley Ambulance Service, how will this board interact?
Uh, they, they will have their ambulance service area director, um, for the Christmas Valley District. She will be on this board as well. And, uh, suing will be, I, I don't, she hasn't sent her application in, but she was at the first meeting. Uh, that we had several weeks ago, but before we had any applications in, was initially like, hey, guys, you know, we, we gotta get this figured out. Um, we're having our next meeting on Thursday this week in Summer Lake. Um, and so we'll actually have some actual board members.
We're recruiting with this.
Right. And Paisley, of course, um, you have Silver Lake, uh, which includes the Summer Lake area. Um, and then you have, uh, the Lakeview, um, ASA number four, uh, which also includes Warner Valley. So, um. All four ASAs will be coming together at the table finally. We'll all be kind of talking. And they have talked a lot and tried to work together in the past. But we've never had, this board hasn't had in a long time, an actual advisory committee. Uh, working with the commissioners and talking to us because we haven't updated their plan almost thirty years.
Well, that's what really helped us with like all the monitors and stuff that we paid for all the Cures Act money.
Absolutely.
If we didn't know that coming, it would have really helped.
Full disclosure, I didn't even know we hadn't had the ordinance. Um, and when Troy Armstrong came on at the hospital, he started, you know, combing through things and old documents and he found it. And he was like, hey. Where's the ambulance service area advisory committee? And I was like, I don't think we have one. And even though we have an ordinance, it says we're supposed to. Um, but, uh, he had also gotten a letter randomly from the state and I believe it's because of the contract that we put into place with the hospital. Uh, for ASA number four, because we actually did an ambulance service area plan for ASA four.
Which encompass.
Which is Warner Valley and Lakeview area, um, all the way up to, up Aver Lake, um, kind of towards, uh, Valley Falls. And so, um. When they, they reached out and they, it was a very cold email saying Lake County is out of compliance and blah, da, 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 da. You guys need to update your plan. The reality is, um, that they haven't communicated with us for over twenty years. And so we'll get this fine and we, we actually, we were, we just wrote it back and was like, hey. Opportune time for letting us know because we just realized we had this ordinance and everything else. We were trying to figure out what we needed to do. So now we have a contact at the state, but we can talk to them once we get our plan in place and adjust it.
I don't know how much I'm blaming the state, uh.
I blame them all the time.
This, we're responsible for our campaign too.
Oh, absolutely. Um, I.
This is getting us on the right track.
I just don't think that the prior board and, um, many of us really had a full understanding of how much the commissioners had a role in the ambulance service areas. Uh, and the fact that the volunteers, we take them for granted. And, and I would say, I would say that to a great extent because. For many years, it's just been business as usual. These are the guys that come and help you and save your life when you need it. Um, in reality, the majority of them are all volunteers. Uh, these ambulance service areas have, um. Done tremendous work for a long time in saving people's lives and, uh, in the end. The buck stops at the commissioners because we are the one responsible. You're absolutely right. Um, and we've taken them for granted in their services.
So it's been lost in the show.
It, it has and just a lot, a lot has. So this is just kind of getting us on that right track. So we've got five applications, Jamie Roscoe, Judy Clark, Gallagher, Armstrong and Shine. Um, those are the first applicants, I believe, we'll probably end up having close to eleven by the end of it.
Good.
So. Do you guys have any questions on the individual applications? Jamie Roscoe actually wrote a really nice letter. Um, explaining why he's.
Yeah.
Wanting to be on. I always like it when people send letters along with their implications and it's not just a name checkbox, but.
Somebody's, uh, Judy Clark, Dr. Gallagher, I think their name.
Yeah.
Is the resume.
Yeah, right. Absolutely. Completely agree.
Exactly.
Yeah, we, we know who this is.
But I appreciate Mr. Roscoe doing that, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I didn't know him that, otherwise I don't think.
Yeah, him and his wife have the cowboy dinner tree and he's worked with the Silver Lake, uh, ambulance for a long time. Uh, he's got a lot of years in the military. Experience and service. So he's really good to have up there. I think he's the youngest guy we have right now on the ambulance. It's a big issue actually in a lot of these volunteer groups. Um, trying to get some more recruitment out there, get some of the younger blood. So if there's no questions on that, we can move on. Uh, Central Oregon Cohesive Strategy Initiative Steering Committee membership.
Yeah. So, uh, I'm on the Natural Resources Liaison, uh, Central Oregon. Gave us a call, wanted us, wanted to have a meeting. Looks like previous Commissioner Shown, uh, helped, uh. Form this, uh, back in twenty eighteen. Uh, Central Oregon, uh. Is encompassing Crete County, Jefferson County, Clamath County, Lake County, and Chutes County. And of that, Lake County is only three percent of their, uh, focus area at the time in twenty eighteen. Nonetheless, uh, Commissioner Shown, I think felt that it was important, uh, the good work they were doing, talking about cohesive strategy, trying to, uh. Clean up the land as far as, uh, making fire, uh, the landscape a resilient landscape, uh, buoy protection. And response to wildfire and. Central Oregon has a good group that they're working on this. You've seen the pine projects along Highway eighty seven. And then other projects in and around the bend area are the primary focus areas. Uh, with Lake County only being three percent of the commitment and it showed. Uh, the financial contribution being two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. What has changed since twenty eighteen is that we now have the Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership. And the Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership is really movements and mountains and they're, they got a lot of good work going on. My recommendation to the board here is that we don't contribute to Central Oregon. Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership is now providing those needs and although. We haven't seen anything from Central Oregon that has helped us, that I'm aware of, on our extreme north end of the county. I do believe that in due time, the Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership will be servicing us better. Now I have asked that I continue to, uh, be invited to their discussions because they do have good discussions. And it, it may benefit us somewhere down the road, but, uh, they don't want to contribute any financial to this group. You guys agree with that?
That sounds.
I'm totally good with it. I think you're heading in the right direction. While we're talking about it, even though it's two thousand dollars for them, for them, um. Just kind of putting a bug in your guys' ear, I would like to transfer that to the Clamath Lake Health. But make it like a five thousand dollar instead of two thousand and. Their project they're working on, Tom, is great. This next few months is gonna be huge.
Yeah.
And so.
So.
Just, just me speaking out loud.
And just so you know, uh, Clamath Lake Forest Health Partnership hasn't asked for any money. Doesn't mean they wouldn't take some money, but, uh, we are gonna seize the direct benefit. And I am on those meetings and, uh, I can inquire.
Okay.
I also, just so everybody knows, I did ask Ann Crumright to look and see when's the last time we paid Central Oregon. She can't find it. So.
Okay.
We don't even know if we ever paid Central Oregon.
We did in twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
That one time.
The one time.
Okay.
So she was looking. But, uh, not aware of twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, so.
Okay.
You can kind of see that, that group is, uh. Ebb and flow through time and they're, they're getting the band back together and wanting to see what our capital level was. Clamath County is going to contribute and they are nine percent of them. And that's good for sixty, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's their choice.
I'm totally different now. We also belong to the ORCOW. You might know this is new business, but, um. I'm thinking, you know, we only paid like a hundred and fifty bucks or whatever it was. And we haven't really done anything to that group either. And so I would be keen to.
ORCOW?
Yeah.
They came, gave us presentation one time and we get the emails every now and then, but I have not been able to make it to one single one of their meetings.
I have.
Is it fuel reduction? Is it? They do the work.
Habitat restoration.
Yeah, Habitat Restoration and New Year, which is good, but. Most of their work is done in Northern California. I just don't think we're getting a bang for a buck, even though our buck is very small, so.
Right, but there are butts.
Yeah.
So. Um, question on this. And I suppose I, I'm, I'm curious just for process wise, are we looking at rescinding this resolution? Because this is actual, this is an actual resolution.
I have proposed for rescinding the resolution.
Um, we can act on that tomorrow, then I guess. Whatever you guys are comfortable with. Uh, last thing, and then we're gonna take a quick break. Eighteen Amendment to OHA Agreement. Have you guys had a chance to kind of look at that? It just looks like it's, uh. Finishing dollars around again, um. It's, uh, there's, there's some dollars moving around with WIC. And, uh. Yeah, it looks, it looks like it's entirely on the WIC program. And they're just moving funds one place to the other.
I have no questions.
Okay. If anyone does have any questions, I encourage you, reach out to Judy.
Always hoping that sixteen hundred or.
This is, uh. Total amount is like eighteen hundred.
Must be a little thief somewhere.
Yep, and that's all it, that's what these things usually are. A lot of little pieces just moving around. Um. Other than that, uh. We can take a short break, ten minutes, uh, until our time item at eleven on Warner Creek. We'll recess until eleven.
Good.
Thank you. Get a, get a restroom break in. I believe that camera is still on though. Just isn't that bad?
So those are.
In our room.
Can I turn this thing off?
Yeah, you'll have to, you'll have to remember what button you push though when you turn it back on. Kevin left, so.
Do you want me to look at it?
This power button here? Or just this intake?
All right, the meeting, the time is eleven o'clock. We'll open the meeting back up. Uh, a item on our agenda is, uh, Warner Creek Correctional Facility Update. Um, not sure who wants to go first. Got a lot of folks in the room. Jane, I know you, we've been texting a little bit in the last couple of days. There's been some emails exchanged, uh, with Colette Peters. Uh, do you have anything you wanna share with us?
Sure. Uh, maybe just to bring everybody up to date, um, maybe I'll, um, give you what. What I received from Colette Peters, um. We had been hoping maybe we could talk to the governor, um. Right now, that doesn't look like it's. We had been hoping maybe we could talk to the governor. Um, right now that doesn't look like it's going to be possible. Um, we'll, we'll keep trying, but I don't think that um is gonna happen anytime soon. Um. One of the things that Colette did um remind me of in one of our text exchanges is that there is still um bond money outstanding on the facility and that that bond um money will still be outstanding when the facility closes, as long as it closes on the projected date at the time. Um, what um Colette did say is that that amount is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And she did get confirmation from DAS on that. Um, and that's everything that, the geothermal infrastructure, everything. And she didn't tell me the amount or how much longer that amount would be outstanding. But what she thought is that the state would refinance that outstanding um bond amount. Um, that kind of sent me down a rabbit hole about making sure that the town didn't have outstanding. The town will still have, the, the town will still have problems um because they are getting income from the, um, from the state for their um just sewer water, those kind of things. That will go away. Um, but I did talk to Darrell Anderson and he told me that the town did finance a bond for an additional um, I believe he called it a water tower that they um built for the facility. And he did not know the amount on that. He said he thought that the construction amount is about five hundred thousand dollars. That was fifteen years ago. Um, he thinks it will still be, some of that will still be outstanding. So that's something we need to um chase down, you know.
Where is that water tower?
I don't know.
Okay. Do you?
It's, that's the one above uh Goldmore?
Goldmore.
Probably Goldmore, that makes sense.
Up on the hill above uh Kaiser View or Sunny Slope?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Probably.
Cause we're not talking about the one in Beverly.
No.
That's.
That's old, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is, Goldmore makes sense.
Yeah, when I asked the town about that, if there was anything, oh, they told me there wasn't. But I'm gonna readdress that.
Now you know exactly what to ask for on that water tower.
Cause I need to get that information right away because like I told you, Senator Finley's working on trying to get money for the town also.
Right.
Because of the, you know, the two hundred thousand, virtually over two hundred thousand dollar losses that'll be taking a year.
Yeah.
For the geothermal surfaces, the sewer and the water and the sewer.
So that, that is um, that's what I got um from Colette.
Was it a hun, was it a hundred and fifty thousand where it is right now?
Hundred and fifty thousand is the amount outstanding.
For our, for, with our portion and everything, yeah. But that's separate from the town.
It's separate from the town.
We.
Senator Finley's aware of that also. He added up in our meeting today.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
I may even wear it because I thought he needed it to know.
Yeah. Um, other than that, I have been kind of bombarding Senator Betsy Johnson to try and just talk to her and find out what her thoughts are on, does a legislature have any um, any desire, any appetite at all to go after this? Um, because when I talked to Joe, is it Basler?
Basler.
Basler.
Mm-hmm.
Joe Basler, who is the um union, I guess, is he the lead?
He's political advisor.
Okay.
Yeah, director.
Okay, for the union. Um, one of the things that, I guess, I had been kind of operating on the thought that if the union, or I'm sorry, if the legislature just wanted to continue running the um WCCF, that they could put money in the budget to do that and things would go forward. He told me that that is not the case, that because of how things um set forward in the governor's budget, that the legislature would have to actually have a separate bill to um, to run the um, to run the WCCF going forward. Um, I want to chase that down to be sure that he's certainly no fool.
And, and um, I did participate in the lobby day with more um representatives and, and senators and um, ASME's mindset is that they don't think that she should have enough power to do this. But most of the senators and representatives are under the understanding that she is. So it's whether or not they'll be willing to fight a fight. And um, I, I'm not um convinced that that will happen. That's my biggest concern.
Did you talk to any of them individually?
Um, I, I did my spiel. Um, I would be more than happy to reach out to any of them, but um, the, one of the, one of the individuals, me and Pat Flaherty from um the other side of the state, we talked to, oh, I'd have to get on my, to remember his name. Um, but he was not a fan when he said that we're from ASME. But once, once I explained where I lived and what my mindset was, he goes, okay, I'll talk to you about it, so.
Okay.
So yeah, I, I know how to talk to one side versus the other now, so. It's all about the game, yeah.
All right, is there a question?
Uh, you know, just a comment. Um, our lobbyists for the Community Corrections Directors released the Department of Corrections budget information. They're in the middle of budget hearings and talking the ways and means about their budget. I believe that's who they're talking to, is that right, Steve? Yes. What is it mean? Started yesterday. So I've looked through all the documents and, uh, everything that's being presented is funding for Warner Creek through um, June thirtieth of twenty-two. And that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's verbiage in there about closing prisons and Warner Creek being one of those.
I believe our understanding, and I'm just gonna say this perfectly bluntly, was the governor is not willing to meet with us on this issue and that her decision was final. That was pretty much the gist of it in the most polite way that I can say it. So. I guess it, it really leaves our committee in a tough spot. Because I think you make a really good point. Yes, you guys can make the arguments, you can do your spiel, we all do it. Um, but in the end, you need representatives and senators that are willing to fight for it.
Mm-hmm.
And most of them, at, at least, you know, from our point of view, the senators and reps that we typically work with, they don't have too many chits left
Yeah.
to, to fight with. And so that's unless you can get some other reps and senators willing to stand, uh, step up against the governor, which I'll be frank, I don't see that happening. Um, not for Warner Creek. Not for Lake County, not.
If it was for the Portland area or even possibly Salem area, I'd say yes, but not for the rural areas.
Not, not yet. It's just uh, we really did hope, I think, and that was our light, the, you know, thinking that if we could just speak to the governor and just talk to her. And I, because we didn't know who was talking to her.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't know who, where she was getting her information because there was so much misinformation going way back. And we've, we've made our case multiple times, no, this is not correct, no, this is not correct. And we felt if we could just have a conversation with her, it would be better. It's been made clear to us, and I believe it was made clear to Senator Finley prior, that she has no intention of changing her mind. And she doesn't want us to even try to change her mind.
And, and that's the thing that irritates me. Because it's like um, she's just wiped the slate of our area and I still don't understand the, the mo, the, the thinking behind it during COVID. I, 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 I'm still totally befuddled at, at how she came up with this. I'm confused.
Unfortunately, it's very political. If it wasn't, there are six prisons right in the Salem area. Some of them close to a hundred years old or older.
Mm-hmm.
We have the second newest prison, well-run. Um, still little bonds on it, still a little money on it. But yet they are closing that. And every prison that's being closed is in a rural area where more than likely those aren't her constituents anyways. And so unfortunately, it's, and it's like this, um, you know, we've, we're making valiant efforts to use the data that we've collected to change your mind, but unfortunately, I don't see that happening.
All right, so the question I guess is where do we go from here? Where does this committee see themselves? You know, what, what's the role going forward? I don't wanna, I, I, I really struggled with accepting the fee. Okay, bubble dance.
I, I don't, I don't think we have to accept the fee right now. Um.
Okay.
You know, I think we owe it to our community to battle until she closes the door and, um. You know, some information that's came up in the last two weeks, we didn't have when this first started. And we, it's possible we can get more information. I guess a question to you, did they stop, did they stop transfers or postpone transfers?
Only on a very limited basis because of COVID.
No, I'm talking about employee transfers.
Did they stop?
Yeah, I heard, I heard that they stopped allowing employee transfers because you guys were losing so many people. So that, that isn't true. So.
The problem, Mark, just to clarify, what the department's wanting to do is to slow that process down so it doesn't put us into a staffing issue more than we already are. So they're trying to come up with ways and they're working on it now, not just for us, but for Shutter Creek and Warner Creek. So that it doesn't speed up the closing process.
Obviously, that, that, that's my whole point about this is what's gonna happen is people trying to protect their own future transfer out and it causes an implosion from within because you don't have the staff. And so it would look perfect for her if it closed because you couldn't staff it. And she'd come out smelling like a rose and it would close anyways. And that's a problem that I feel that we're gonna face.
And I second that.
How, how many uh, I assume you're having to do some hiring?
What if I had someone to hire?
Yeah, that's the problem.
You can't get anybody to.
I don't have anybody to hire, let alone hire.
How many vacant jobs do you have?
We have nine hard vacancies today in officer positions. Two more to come in a couple of weeks.
And so it's causing to close by itself and, um. There's no way that we can stop that unless they stop the transfers right now, but.
Well, this is Steve Brown's opinion, not per se in the department. You, you, you really can't stop folks from taking jobs to provide for their families.
Right, and that's what I mean though. I mean, it's gonna close on its own.
It's a self prophecy.
So one of the next steps is you know, we propose to draft a letter to the governor, at least stating again the facts because we don't know if we're ever been on record as opposing the closure to her. We wanna assure that she has that.
We've been on record to the legislature.
To the legislature, but we're gonna send a letter to the governor stating the need for the, to keep the prison and the impacts to the community and the county. You know, at least so that we are stating on our part. So that uh we don't hear back from Governor Brown stating, well, I never heard of Lake County stating otherwise.
The other thing that Joe said is that she is very averse to bad publicity.
That I was just gonna say, we need to get it out in the media.
Yeah. Now's the time.
Yeah.
Now, now is the time to get um, to try and push out the publicity again. And we, we did that in um March or March, August.
Yeah.
Yeah, July, August. We had a little round again when the budget came out. Now, they're, they're doing Department of Corrections budget now.
Yeah, they're presenting. They're presenting a budget.
Correct. They're, they started last night with a presentation to the Subcommittee Ways and Means. Yeah, it'll be, you can watch it tomorrow. I think it starts at one. Uh, and then if they need more time, I think they've got time on Thursday also.
So it's kind of timely. Um, but at first I thought, well, you know, we can always get something in the way from the examiner, we need to get something in the Willamette Valley, but Joe said, don't worry, just get something somewhere and then we can share it.
Okay.
Um, so anything that we can get.
And it shows up, you know, if you get somebody at the Eastern Oregonian or something like that, you know, that'd be really advantageous and get a few of those other ones.
Yeah, the only problem with the Eastern Oregonian is that it's behind a paywall.
Oh, that's.
So you share it and then they can't read it. So.
Yeah.
If we can get something somewhere that's shareable and readable.
Right.
Um. So if we, and try to highlight that this was poorly thought out. That seems to be, gosh, you didn't think about this. I mean, yeah, we know that they're according to Colette that they'll refinance the bond, but we need to point out, there's already, there's bond money on it. That this is bad for like the, you know, all this stuff that we've been pointing out all along. Let them take the hits or let them say, well, we'll do this or that. But that's one of the things that we can try to do. Kristy Albertson has um, this meeting that we were in. Um, talked about, she has good contacts with the Oregon Newspaper Association. And um, she thought she could maybe get it, get it somebody that's pretty well um informed that way. Um, Brenda talked about the, on March thirteenth, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, um, on March thirteenth, Shutter Creek is having a um picket, so to speak, on one of the main drags. And um, we're trying to get other institutions around the state to do like an informational picket just to, to let this know or let it get out there, especially along the lines of the mindset of the union right now is if they can do it to us, they can do it to any prison out there, which is actually rather terrifying. Um, but um, Jane brought up the idea, instead of us doing a, a informational picket, maybe have some people walk in the parade with picket signs and get some media coverage on that. And have it not just Warner Creek employees, but uh community members that want to participate and help support this. Just, just to get it on the news. That, that's my mind, I have, I, let's do a media blast. That, that's my mind, cause let's do a media blast. Yeah, I mean, because to me, that's, that's our hail Mary. That's, that's, I think.
Well, and we have a pretty definitive answer now. We held back because we weren't sure.
Right.
We were even getting to the governor yet.
Right, right, right.
But now we know we are.
Right.
And we know that most of this is coming from her. And I think that it's important that people understand.
Yeah.
About that.
So are you talking about the Irish days?
Yeah, and because like, cause we were talking, the union's idea was informational picket. But Jane came up with a wonderful idea on that. And I mean, I can get, um, pickets, I can get the signs together and we can, um, come up with some good sayings that, are, um, politically, politically correct-ish.
But make the point.
Yes. We don't want her to close it down right now, but, um, but no, I mean, because I would, I would be more than happy to get all that stuff together and, but I, I think that's, you know, we have to hit the media. That's in, in my opinion, that's what we have to do.
I was thinking if we used that as kind of a, people like you are so frustrated that they took to their local parade to, you know, maybe use that as the bounce off.
Yep, I agree.
I totally agree. It's time to get somebody here. Tell Christie to use that as the bounce off maybe.
Yeah.
If that works.
Absolutely, cause I'm, um, I'm, well, Mr. Brown knows, I'm not afraid of opening my mouth. I, I will, I will continue to, to scream from the mountaintop until the end. But, um, my personal opinion, I think it is gonna happen unfortunately, but I'm gonna go down swinging. I, I, because I don't even wanna think what it's gonna do to this community.
No, it's, it's, it's not over until it's over. That's kind of where, you know, I've been from the very beginning in my mind. And that's why I encourage everybody else that, you know, I talk to about it. And I think that, you know, it's not a very popular idea to think about planning for the worst. But I think now that maybe our committee needs to keep doing exactly what we're talking about here. But we also need to branch into a, what do we do?
Oh, yeah.
You know, what do we do and when it closes, if it closes? Um, I think we have to stay positive. That's, that's the biggest thing. It's a, it's a really tough thing for our community and in some way, we have to stay positive even though it's not. And so.
I just, I just wish that there was an actual good reason behind.
I know, right.
Because that, I, I think it would be easier for a lot of people to understand the process, but.
Right, well, and my problem is I'm old and I remember in the eighties when they tried to do something extreme, you know, very similar and they started with, um, juvenile corrections. And I was working in, um, youth services at the time and it was horrible. It was absolutely horrible. And it, and you know, it ended up, um, you know, they, they closed McLaren, which was the, the Kitty Prison, you know, and all that stuff and it didn't work. And three years later, the, the youth authority was developed and the, and the Kitty Prison in Grants Pass was, you know? It's like, you know, I mean, you just see it, that's just a, a kind of a weird example, but, um, you know, I've been there, done that and it, it's scary. Because the money was supposed to go from those facilities into the community for services and.
That didn't happen.
Well, kinda, you know, not, not really.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, I mean, this board, we're all looking at Plan Bs. And we've all kind of accepted the fact, but we, Commissioner Alberton's kind of taking point on looking at, you know, what the opportunities, what opportunities might be out there. Because, yeah, the inevitability is, uh, of closure is really looking more real.
And, and I do wanna pass along, one thing that I heard in, from numerous legislators is that, well, Lake County is going to be buying that property. And I said, but, 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 but whoa, what you don't understand is they're gonna be out so much money. They're not gonna have the money to do that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, legislators are still getting.
Impression.
They're wrong.
Yeah, so there is a bill Senator Finley has, is proposing where we would be given the facility. And I believe the clause has been entered in there now with an amendment to where we will have some time to look at it upon closure, to go through and make sure that, you know, not everything was just stripped there, you know? The doors haven't been taken off or whatever else. But also with this bond, we, we don't wanna be taking that on either. We think that's an obligation that the state needs to fulfill, one way or the other.
Right.
And maybe if, you know, I mean, there, there's a lot of opportunities out there. Commissioner Alberton has been doing a lot of the footwork and looking for businesses to submit business plans for what they would like to do. If we have it and it is the counties, our interest would probably be to put someone in there as quickly as possible.
So Finley and, Senator Finley and Rep. Reski are bringing the bill. That's number nineteen. We would get the facility, um, and the geothermal infrastructure free and clear. They can't strip the facility. We have, we have a thirty day right to refuse them, so thirty days after the doors close, if we don't want it as a board, we don't take it. But we're not gonna take it with them owning any money. We're not gonna take on any debt. And so like I had explained to Jane is I wasn't part of the committee to save the prison because I felt in my heart that I would do more harm than good because of my relationship with the governor. So I've been working on Plan B. I'm the one who got Finley to propose the bill. I'm, I actually have a meeting this Friday with, um, that new book, Larry Holmes' Gang and Business Oregon. They brought on a lady by the name of Jill Miles, who's also with Business Oregon, but they're a business, she's a business recruiter. They brought up a couple of businesses that might possibly be interested in taking the facility. My thought though is I, I wanna employ at least a hundred employees, have a good wage, and then the county can lease them the property back for a low price. And so there are a couple of businesses that we're talking about. Nothing that's set in stone by anyone. Matter of fact, I have a proposal brought to me yesterday. I'm not gonna comment a whole lot on that other than if they have a business plan that works, we'll be game as a board to hear. But the last thing I want to happen is we move somebody in there and it doesn't work. And, um, because I don't think Lake County can handle that. And the last thing that I wanted was an abandoned state-owned facility sitting there. So every time somebody drives by, we have that reminder of how the state of Oregon failed our community. And so but I also, like Ginger said, you know, we have to give, provide hope and I believe that we can, you know? I don't wanna turn down a $1 million facility because of fear. Just the infrastructure on the geothermal is worth millions. And, you know, there's a lot of opportunities and we just gotta get it before the right people. The problem is, is that I have this other committee set up with the state, you know, with Regional Solutions and Business Oregon to help me, but until we know for sure, no business really wants to buy in until they know that we're gonna get it. And so in one way, it's good the prison's still going, but in another way, it's bad because I can't move a business in there until we know. And, you know, I would be happy with the governor saying, yes, on this date, it's gonna be closed for sure. Or it's gonna remain open, which that's the best case scenario would be it remains open. But it's looking more and more like it's not going to. But I would be happy, you know, if you guys wanna join in on a call on Wednesday, on Friday, I'd be happy to have you, but I'm just telling you where I'm coming from because I had, I had to do something in the background of trying to make Plan B. And so that's where we're at.
So my question for you, if, if your Plan B succeeds, which if that closed, if, yeah, what are the odds of, um, people displaced from their jobs? I guess it just depends on what kind of business is coming in.
I know what you're gonna ask.
Yeah, you'll say.
One of my thoughts is, is that when we make the lease agreement with whoever, that, you know, your, your, your price of your lease goes down, the more in Lake County residents you hire, the less you have to pay. And the more you hire, the less you have to pay. And so, um, if we have a business in there that employs a hundred and five employees, you know, my thought, just thinking out loud was if you employ a hundred and five employees, you filled that loss, right? And, um, so we lease it to you for a dollar a year for a certain amount of years or, or whatever. I've also been in contact with Facebook and they haven't responded back other than they already have a facility in Primeville, which they feel might be too close. But I don't know what the good board's got planned for us, but, you know, in my heart, I have to believe that we're gonna make something better than what was there. And we have to go with that attitude.
And, and, um, the only reason why I ask that is because the staff that's lack of better phrase, sorry, going down with the ship. If they knew that they might have a job afterwards would help with their mindset. Because, I mean, I, I think that, that's the hardest thing for staff right now is everything is so unknown. And it's, and like you said, we don't have a definite date. So the, the stress level is astronomical for these people that are trying to figure out how they're gonna, you know, take care of their families, so.
I've been in contact with the director of East Cass Kees Works too. And she's going to help with, um, with transfers and then help with job training skills. Or if there's something that goes in there, she'll help facilitate trainings for the employees, she said. And so she's working with Business Oregon to help establish that plan for anyone that's displaced by this.
Okay, yeah, just, just anything that, that gives people hope. Cause that gives us a, a better spin than you're out of luck. So, perfect, okay.
I appreciate that information because that's really where we need to kinda keep focusing on. Uh, otherwise we lose everybody.
Exactly, exactly.
Then we've got to build a whole new recruitment.
Right, right.
To try to come back.
Right.
If, if, if the business that comes in is similar or somewhat similar, uh,
Or people can be retrained.
Yeah, it can be retrained. Retraining is, is totally, uh, earlier on, uh, before, you know, Commissioner Alberton and I were kind of, both looking for businesses to kind of, uh, to take the, take that spot. Um, and I had actually reached out to Tesla.
Oh, uh-huh.
And, uh, because they were looking relocate from California, looking for a new location. So I reached out to them and I thought a battery factory would make sense. Being they were the most renewable county in the state. And they're looking at opening up a big lithium mine in Nevada, uh, for batteries and everything else. And those are a lot of tech jobs, but also what tech jobs comes with need for security to protect the tech.
Yep.
And so there might be some jobs there. And I mean, you've still got a huge, a huge facility, you've got kitchen, you've got all the different things that still, you, you need to cook for all these people and everything else. So there was a lot of opportunity there, but I, I don't think the Tesla thing was gonna pan out because they were all ready, they had a spot in Texas they were looking to, you know, everything, right? So, um, you know, I mean, it really does come down to the business plan that would come forward. Yes, Ginger?
So just a question, what about our infrastructure to support, um, whomever might come in terms of electricity? Um, you know, power?
Well, it supports the prison.
And, right, but sometimes, you know, it just depends on what it is because sometimes they really eat it up. And also redundancy at our, our internet.
Yeah, that, that is a big deal.
Yeah, I was thinking that might be a part of a package to.
Right, and like, if we had somebody where like, um, Facebook moving in.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
The talk with them was, so, you know, there's an opportunity to put a one megawatt solar facility in, out there. Facebook uses ten megawatts a day. And so there's gonna be these logistical things that we need to think about, about what can go in there. Um, one of the, I'll say one of the places that is, or one of the outfits that is looking at it is a fresh pond company, like really freshwater ponds. And they would use the water to keep their ponds. I mean, that's just one, one of the things where you wouldn't need that kind of electrical system. But, you know, we'll just cross those roads when we come to them, you know? And, you know, we might have to do some things different.
Well, I do thank you guys for everything that you're putting into this because it's a devastation for all of us, for all of us.
My thought, going back to your, you know, would be, you know, part of our contract with whoever leases it could be, you know, you get credit if you retrain those people or whatever in line of work it is. I think the employees out there deserve to have first right to the job. And if they can do the job and we retrain for it, then we're doing good for the whole community.
And that's kinda why we were thinking, you know, like the rent, if we have the facility, we rent it to whatever business came in for a dollar a year, it's just hire our people.
Right.
You know, we would want to buy it to have it.
And I mean, if you guys know anything unhappy, there wasn't any ideas that you might have, I mean, and the thing is, is that, yes, this is a huge blow to us. But it's not, no, so.
Well, and, and what I'm here for in my mind is I'm just trying to take care of the staff, I, their, their mindset, trying to, um, yeah, because everything's up in the air. So, um, this is some great.
You know, it affects, it affects virtually every aspect of our community. From our grocery stores to our housing market. You know, there's sixty-two houses involved, um, not counting the rentals. That's just the owned properties. Eighty-nine kids in our school districts affects everything. That's just the owned properties, 89 kids in our school districts, affects everything. And not only financially, but like you say, you know, that job out there, being a corrections officer myself is stressful enough, much less having this added burden on to them. And, you know, you can talk about being politically correct, I've never been very good at it. And I think shame on her. Or, or in a time where our, our community's suffering COVID, then you kick us in the guts while we're down. But we're part of the resilient, we do, we'll come out and we just gotta stick together, so.
And it just feels personal in my opinion.
It really does.
And, and I think everybody's feeling that and.
It is personal.
Ho- hopefully I don't run into her because I, I might be in trouble.
You know, it's, it's really hard because I, Jane and I, we've had some conversations about this. I could ease, we, we could play the other side of it and give her the benefit of the doubt that she's not being personal, maybe she's just cold and callous, but, uh, but it's personal to us.
Well, and I think she's made it personal to us.
Well, and, and, and just, I mean, the, anything that happens to our community is person to us because we're a tight knit, small community. And when 108 jobs go away and a business closes or a facility or whatever else, that's their livelihoods. It's personal. So whether she is doing this with the evilist or best intentions doesn't matter. It's personal and it matters to us. And whether she lives in Portland or not, she is to serve.
All of the.
Lake County is one of the 36 counties that she is to serve and she's never even been here.
Right.
So.
Bet you she doesn't come now. Sorry.
The thing is, is that, you know, if we had an intruder come into our household to take everything from our family, we'd fight to the end. And as a community, that's what we have to do.
Yep.
And so we fight for it. And we're going to disagree, I'm like, we think should go in there, but by God, we're going to get something in there. And in my mind, it's going to be better than it is right now, so.
Well, again, I want to thank you guys on behalf of all the staff for everything you guys are doing because it, yeah, it's a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel.
Well, it, it's still up in the air for us too, though.
Oh, I know, but at least there, there is the haze of a rainbow.
That's it, so.
Yeah, that's.
Many of us have been through this similarly before and when all the mills closed because of a false statement, but, and we battled our way out and we'll do it again, so.
Okay, so our marching orders, our Britton's minute, going to, you're, you're on parade patrol.
Okay.
Okay, I will talk with, um,
What?
Um.
Oh, Darrell Anderson.
No, not, no, she, Albertson. Albertson, Christine.
Christine, yes.
I will talk with Christine and see if we can get some good publicity. Um, we'll see if we can round up more than just folks that work in the prison.
Yeah.
To be part of the group.
Yeah.
In the parade.
Yep.
And so we'll stay in touch.
And I'll, I'll put on like your announcements.
Yes.
Um, anybody that wants to, to, to let me know so I know how many signs we need to have.
And talk with the chamber to get us.
Okay.
As part of the parade.
Okay, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So that we're not surprising them.
Surprise.
We're here.
Okay, okay.
So, so Jane, I'll take, I'll go back to the town on Water Tower and see if they still own bonds because we need to, we need to fix that, we need to take care of that immediately, so.
Yeah, because they were unaware of when I talked to them, so they need to.
Yeah, when I talked to them, they didn't have, so. And I didn't get that in my information.
I need to. Because when I called, I called right after I talked to you, oh, no, I don't know. I think there's something, and you all said, yes, thank you.
When, when I contact the chamber, what should I call our group?
That's a good question. Um, we don't have, we have a name.
Save the prison?
Save the prison at this point.
I think we've been the coalition, we've been something, something.
Warner Creek.
Warner Creek, yeah.
Warner Creek Correctional Facility Retention.
Or reopening, or, or not reopening, um.
Keep it simple.
Yeah, keep it simple for this, though.
Just save it, yes.
Save the community.
C M R L.
I like save the community because it's everybody.
Yeah.
So do any of you need, um, a refresher copy of the information from Damon Runberg? And some of the information I gathered.
You know, I've written all of the line.
Pardon?
I've written all of the line, yeah, but.
Yes, I've got some clean copies here, I can email it to, I can email it to you and you can re-mail it out to everybody.
Email would be nice.
Yeah, I'll do that. And then I've got some copies I brought too, just to.
Yeah, and then if we succeed in getting some, um, press here and we can get some talking points that they're going to focus on, this was poorly thought out decision. That's going to be what we are going to focus, we're going to get it, every, everybody is.
The headline should be the understatement of the year.
Yes.
Poorly planned.
Who thought of this?
Well, we'd love to meet with somebody to get it in the paper too.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yeah, we're not, we're not, not, we're not hitting out the examiner.
Oh, no, I figured, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Put that out there.
We'd just like to get some.
Yeah, we're just trying to do a media blitz.
Yeah.
I think lost in all this is that there was 48 acres donated. And although it didn't get done properly legally, the intent was it would, could not be shut down, that it would go forever.
Yep.
I don't know if they want to put that in your letter, but, yeah. But I think that's an important point.
And it showed that our community had skin in the game right from the beginning by donating the property.
And I don't know why they left 50 ex- acres extra, they have 90 out there. But, um, we're probably going to make it bigger at some point.
It's going to be there, spread out.
Okay, so anything else? Is that hearing begin tomorrow? Is that right?
There is.
What?
Yeah, I think it's room 170, so if you go to the party legislative website, you can click on that and you can watch it. Yes, no, it's virtual, so you'll see videos of all the committee members and then when the department's doing the presentation, you just see the slide.
Oh, okay, that's good. Let's listen to it episode.
Yeah.
Thank you all for.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, guys. We'll just. Hold on.
Yep.
One day at a time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank Jane.
Jane?
Yeah, okay.
So we.
Okay, you're welcome.
Uh, yeah, I'll, um, let's, uh, recess until two o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
We've finished everything else on the, on the agenda. Um, we have another timed item, we'll call it recess until then. Back in session, we've got one item left on our agenda, uh, bringing guardianship to Lake County. Uh, whoever would like to go first and.
Want me to start?
Sure.
Give you the hot seat.
Fine, be happy to. Commissioners, thank you very much for your time, nice to see you. Do you want me to take this off so you can hear better, would that help?
I would like that, but if you want to leave it on, it's up to you.
All right, fine. Um, I've been vaccinated and, uh.
We got the space.
We have a little bit of social distancing so I can perform.
Yeah.
So I, I gotta read those, or me, and it's easier for me to read, but.
It's got bad hearing. Selective hearing.
We all have our challenges.
Yeah.
So the thing I want to talk to you about is, um, guardianship. Now, I don't know if all of you understand what guardians are. Is that something that you're familiar with?
Catholic background, even having a guardian and everything else in childhood, but aside from that, no.
Okay, so, um, there is, guardianship is a term used for a person who is appointed and serves the state to, if I have it correctly, to look out for the welfare of a designated person. Sometimes that person is designated because they're incompetent. Sometimes it's because they are, um, not able for a variety of reasons. They may have, they may be an older person and their younger family members are taking advantage of them. So, um, the court appoints, or the, the state appoints a person to be a guardian. And their responsibility is to make sure that their bills get paid, that somebody doesn't skon with their money, could be a family member, could be a neighbor. Um, but there are very specific sworn duty to take care of these individuals. We don't have anybody in Lake County and haven't had for a long time. We've relied on, there's been a couple of guardians, uh, and Catherine, you can correct me if I have this wrong. But I've worked with two individuals in Clamath County over the course of the last 10 years. One was an attorney, one was a guardian, and they occasionally would help us out with individuals here. Both retired. So Clamath and Lake are in dire need of somebody in this position. Um, Kathleen Rutherford has suggested to me that we ought to, we as Lake Health District ought to consider joining a pact with the commissioners from Clamath County. They've decided to put up $30,000. And would we be interested in putting that money? The rough estimate is, it's about $100, $150,000 a year for the person plus the work that they do. And housing and, and then of course they have to manage the person's finances. Anything that is related to that person, they're like the mom or dad taking care of in a responsible way. What I, what our board said when we talked about this was absolutely, we need to find a way for, as we're going through our budget, and we're in our budget cycle right now, this is a vital need. It's estimated that there are between 10 and 20 people in Lake and Clamath County that could use these services. One of our board members said, um, he's aware of one person that can handle three people because it is such a demanding responsibility. Now, if the, if we share the person, more than likely, there's more need in Clamath County and when people in Clamath County are based in Clamath County, amazingly, they seem to find a lot of work to do in Clamath County. And Lake County doesn't quite get all that better. So I think we need to figure out, how do we pay for somebody? They wouldn't work for, I mean, they, they work in the direction of the state guardian. So it is not like this is, um, just a position we dream up, but we got to figure out how to pay for it. I don't know if there's state money, I don't know if there's going to be other ways to find money. But I think if we could come up with enough help, maybe we could get somebody to be here. What we find from a hospital standpoint is that any given time in a year, there may be three to five people that fall into this category that need to have a guardianship, and we just have no one to turn to. Turners don't want to do it, doesn't pay enough. It's a hassle, this is not an easy job. Cause as you can imagine, life goes on and they may need to get their pharmacy or they may need to get insurance or they may, may need to figure out their banking, pay their water bill, or whatever factors that get played into it. So my plea to you is to think about as you're looking at budgets, is there a way to find some money to join us? Once we can find enough money, then we can figure out who they went for. Where do they get housed, all that kind of stuff. I don't have a preconceived notion, I just know the need is here. You have more that you want to say?
I do.
Good, move that away.
So, I'm Kathleen Rutherford, as Charlie said, and I'm, um, from Clamath County, I'm a social worker, I'm a licensed clinical social worker. And my job, um, I'm actually, my job is titled as I'm an older adult behavioral health specialist through the Oregon Health Authority. And there was an initiative created about four years ago, um, at the state level to, because we're a, an aging population, and especially in the rural counties, to put one person in each county, some of the counties that are bigger, like Modloma County has three people. So there are 24 of us around the state who our main job is to make sure that elders get the services that they need, um, because we have this growing population of elders and we don't have the infrastructure to deal with it yet. But as, I'm at the very end of the baby boomers and my generation, the baby boomer generation is going to be coming in in a tidal wave into the older population and we just don't have the services to handle that. And so one of the things that, um, happened, and you guys have this here, and I don't know if you sit on Rod's stakeholders committee here. Um, I don't know if you guys know Rod Harwood, he's the guy who's here in Lake County. He's a different person, um, but he has a stakeholders, um, committee and I have one in, um, Clamath because I'm assigned to Clamath County, and we meet all the agencies that deal with elders. And so one of the things that we have discussed is what are the biggest issues? And the biggest issue for us has been guardianship. And like, um, Charlie said, we used to have Marsha Echols and we used to have a guy named Joe Mountain over there and they were both the guardians. So there's also a state guardian program, but the state guardian program has, it sounds like you guys don't have any slots over here from them. Um, we have in Clamath County, we have three slots from one state guardian, she handles six counties. A, a guardian can typically take 20 people on their caseload, sometimes up to 25 if they're like not, if they're in a facility and they don't need a lot of help. So, um, what we've ended up having a lot over in Clamath is people being warehoused at the hospital for up to six months, one guy for up to nine months because there was nobody to make decisions and no place for him to go. I don't know if you guys end up with people warehoused in the hospital.
It happens very frequently.
Which is an extreme expense when somebody gets warehoused. And so, um, I started talking to people over in Clamath County about having, um, like what's called a county guardian, but they would go through the state guardian program. And the guy who is the state guardian, his name is Chris, is, um, Chris Rosin. And he is the state guardian, so when I started talking to him, he said he thought that the smartest way financially and just in all ways is to go together with Lake County. He said, I know Lake County has had some issues, I know Clamath County has had some issues around this. And so he suggested that we go together and the program would be run under the state guardian program. And so the, um, the slots would be divided, you know, 10 and 10, I'm assuming, or something like that, depending on how, and, and Chris, um, is not, you know, I know that there have sometimes been issues that, that, um, Charlie has talked about, about somebody from Clamath coming over to do some stuff and you guys get the short end of the stick. And that would not be the case in this case because Chris would be managing that, the position. And so what we're trying to put together is a, um, a working group, a, a bunch of us to go together, the organizations, and make this happen so that we don't have people who are warehoused, we don't have people who don't have the services they need, um, to be able to make the decisions they need. So they're living in unsafe conditions or they're being taken advantage of, um, they're living at. They're living at home and maybe they need to be in a facility because they've got dementia and they can't do that any longer. And so the situation right now is the county commissioners have, in Clamath Falls, have said that they can pay 30,000. And we're talking with the hospital, the city council is behind the idea and they're looking at their budget right now. And so then we talked to Charlie and we're gonna talk to you guys and just see if there's some way that we could as counties work together to bring a need that we all have and working on it together to find a solution to not having our elders not be able to be safe.
So where does Clamath County's 30,000 go towards?
The cost. I mean, when I talked to Chris, he said that it costs between 120 and 150,000 dollars a year for the position, and that includes salary and all the paperwork that is included, like filing court paperwork and that. So that goes, that 30,000 this part, it goes towards that 120 to 150,000 dollars. So it would like go all into one kitty and then, you know, the decisions would be made by Chris about who, because the process is still, when you want somebody to be under guardianship and the application goes to the state. Sometimes the person, just recently, we had a person who contested it and then there was a hearing and it was found that she did need to be under guardianship, but her grandson took that. So sometimes the guardianship program gets involved to help find another appropriate guardian for the person. Maybe the state doesn't actually become the guardian, but they can help find a family member or a neighbor or somebody who's willing to take guardianship. So they can operate in different ways. But that's, that money would go into the amount that's needed for, to have that position.
What's the age of the people who would be eligible?
It doesn't, if there isn't, yeah, any adult over the age of 18. It doesn't cover anybody under the age of 18 because the Child Welfare Department covers that. That's child services. But it would cover anybody over the age of 18, like traumatic head injuries, dementia, just incapacity in other ways, adults with physical disabilities or developmental disabilities that just weren't able to, let's say somebody's living at home with their mom and they have a developmental disability and their mom passes away. Well, that person was their guardian and now this person needs to have a guardian to make those decisions for what's in the best interest. And the way the state guardianship program operates is they, they're very careful to first try to find a family member who's willing and capable of doing that. And then they, they take into consideration what the client wants. Like they don't just warehouse people in facilities. Like if the person is able to stay at home with a caregiver, and that's what ended up happening to the person that I was talking about who ended up needing a guardian. She, and she is still at home, but she just wasn't keeping her caregivers. And now she doesn't have a choice, the caregivers come in and make her meals and do things for her. And then at a certain point down the road, she might end up in a facility. But the point is to keep people in a safe place, not to take them out of their homes.
Where we get involved, if we have somebody that is in our facility and their bill is due, but the relative or partner or somebody has gotten their check and spent it. And so we get stuck with the payment. Those are the kind of things that make it difficult because we want to care for that individual, but we also wanna get paid. So that's why we're just putting it on your radar. So as you're thinking about how you are working towards your budget, is there a way that you can find some money to help make this happen? It would be great if we could have, if we put up a little bit more money than, say, Clamath, we have them housed here. Then they can go over to Clamath if necessary.
Well, and that person could choose, it could be a person hired from here, right?
Always possible.
Yeah. We, I have no agenda for the person to live in Clamath or anyplace else. I mean, it would be a decision made by the person who got hired for the job. So there's no, and there's not really a, as far as I know, there's not really a specific degree or anything that they're looking for. I think they're just looking for an honest person who understand, who understands people's needs. So it's not like somebody has to have a bachelor's or a master's or something to fill the position.
I mean, there's responsibilities with the job, there'll be some reporting requirements.
Oh, absolutely. That's part of, yes. So it is a 40-hour-a-week job because there are reporting, yes. Because they're assuming that the person's gonna have at least a 20% caseload, not to begin with.
Sure, yeah.
But over time, they're assuming the person's gonna average a 20% caseload. And yes, there are reporting and, and for example, because we're so low in Clamath County, I became a volunteer with the state guardianship program. And I now have a client in Clamath County because we, there was nobody else to take this person. And so they're gonna let me have up to two to three people as a volunteer basis to, to help ease the load, hopefully, until we can get somebody in the position. And so it's just really a critical issue as, as our populations are aging.
The term is that they become a fiduciary. They have responsibility to take, do the right thing for those people.
Right. And the main responsibility is over the person and where they reside and how they do. And then, but there's also a financial aspect of, but for example, if a person's in a, lives in a facility and they are Medicaid, then Medicaid really is the person, the agency that deals with the finances because they're paying for the person to live there. And so you're basically making sure the payments happen and that the person is taken care of. But so the main overarching thing is making sure that the person is safe.
Is this a free service to the person, zero cost to the person?
No, no. Most people who need it wouldn't have the ability to do that.
So it's under the authority of the state, though?
Well, the state guardian, yeah.
Which is a state job, paid by the state of Oregon.
Right. So we would be funding that, that position, right? And there, there's another way to go, which is not to do that at all and to create it. And we had looked at that first and it is just a nightmare because you have to get the person certified, you have to have somebody who knows all the ins and outs of the guardianship program to oversee the thing. And that's why when I talked to Chris, it seemed like the most manageable and the most economic way to deal with it was to have the person under the state guardian. So that, because they're gonna, they basically would manage the person's, how they did their paperwork and they would use the state, the same program that I use to write in my visits and what's going on with the person. And you have to make sure, the guardian has to make sure that every single person goes to the doctor at least once a year, to their dentist at least, to the audiologist at least once a year, to the eye doctor at least once a year. You have to, you know, manage their doctor trips and if they have any medical issues, you manage those with them. And so it's a, it's a very, you know, labor-intensive and intricate job because you have to keep all those things lined out.
So all the reporting goes to the state guardian, correct?
To the state guardian, right.
And so have you been to, like, our senators or reps to see if the state would pay for their own program?
We, if the state would pay for their own program, we talked to, I mean, I have talked to the reps, but right now what is going on is they're thinking about in the state legislature, expanding the program. But even if they expanded the program, right now there are five deputies. If they expanded the program, there will be 10 deputies. But that would mean like two more slots per county, then two to three more slots per county than what there already is. So it's not like any county is gonna get a full. So some counties that have, you know, like Multnomah has more slots because it's based on, it's based on population. And so the state, the counties with the bigger population, and so there's no way for us to get through, because it's a really new thing. It just started, the state guardian program just started five years ago. And so it is an up-and-coming need that is becoming more and more as people are living to be older and as we're having a much bigger, older population. And so it's all really new. And a couple's counties have tried to develop their own in-house and it just has been very hard to do because of all the rules and regulations around it. And so the, the answer has been to have more state guardians. But like I said, it doesn't mean that us southern, more rural states are gonna get a lot more slots for people that need it. And our person who, her name is Margaret, who is in Clamath Falls, we have the three slots and there's never a slot open. So that's why I decided to become a volunteer with them to try to, to help with some of that for the moment.
How's it working out?
It's okay, I'm busy. I have a full-time job and that, so it's busy. But I think it's worth it because otherwise we don't have, you know, we have people who are desperate who don't have anybody to care for them, so. Do you guys have any other questions?
Honestly, I don't, I don't know if I have two questions. I have a bunch of questions, but right now I'm just playing around with some of the discretionary dollars that we actually didn't be able to even do that with. We don't have quite as many discretionary dollars as Clamath County does.
Oh, great. Clamath doesn't have a ton of discretionary dollars either.
No, and then whatever they have, I can guarantee we have a lot less.
Yeah. Well, their funding, the funding for the, that they're giving is coming out of the DV Services funding.
Disabled disabilities.
And because, so that means that
Developmental disabilities.
That five of ours, yes, slots are gonna be designated for people with disabilities. And so that's kind of how we're piecing it together. It's okay, this money's gonna cover this population and so it's.
What's 30,000 gonna get you, though? Because he is like 150,000 bucks.
It's a quarter of the, it's a, it's a, so there, I mean, we still have to bring, I mean, we still have to finish getting up there.
Yeah.
So they're, they're saying they can, so that's what we're looking for.
I see, okay.
Each agency is saying, I can give 10,000, I can give 5,000, I can do this. And so we're looking for a pot, yes, to kick into it, but then it's.
Yeah, my money was in the same place. I was trying to think, 30,000 is what it is.
No, it has to be the full amount. And that's what we're looking for, is each entity to give in and sort of say that, and then, and then they have to be able to do that year after year to keep this position. And so, you know, like if you guys could do 5,000, $3,000 or whatever, then that kicks into the kitty and we're trying to build the kitty to at least 120. Because he said that, he thought that, you know, it would be tighter, but that, you know, it costs between 120 and 150. So I went, well, if we could eke up to 120, maybe we could get it started and then see if we could get other people to tag on as time progressed.
What other groups are you gonna ask?
The city council is, is, they're looking at their budget right now and I'm appearing for them again soon. The hospital, I've approached lots of other places and, you know, there just isn't a lot of money out there. So we're just hoping to be able to slowly, little by little, you know, get a commitment here and a commitment there and build the funds so that we can do that.
Well, we're also looking at, to see if we can find some grant money.
Yes.
So that we could, but we need to have enough interest from Lake County if we're gonna get something going that is gonna really help us. It's important for Clamath too, but time and again, the need is always greater with more people, bigger population in Clamath County. And we don't get some, or our residents don't.
But if you can get enough buy-in from enough of the organizations here in Lake County, it helps that grant process.
That's right.
If we were able to go after that, we should have a lot of buy-in.
Right. And, and the, and I'd forgotten the young lady's name that's, I've been talking to about the grant.
Kristy Albertson.
Yes, yes. And she has been, we've been in contact about that. And I'm coming to the stakeholders meeting, the one that I talked to you about, that Rod Harwood runs here, it's, well, I'm not coming because it's virtual, but I'm gonna meet with them and explain the need and hopefully get more agencies here involved in the process too.
James Rod Harwood, Rod Harwood sits on the EOCCO regional meeting.
I was just remembering his name and trying to picture his face and I was wondering if that was the same guy.
He is. And so what he's advocating for is senior needs. A lot of times these are senior citizens, so that's one of the reasons why we're his focus.
So Mel, real quickly, is there grants available through the senior citizens that might provide anything that you could think of?
I need to speak for them. I know they operate on a limited budget, but they could potentially have something.
I'm talking about grant, why it's not that they.
Oh, that they could apply for. I can research that.
My, my problem with this whole deal is, most people don't realize how many state unfunded mandates that the counties have to do. And the state tells us we have to do this or do that or report this or report that. But yet, they fail on a daily basis to fund them. And this seems to me like this should be a state-funded program, especially if you have to report to the state. So I will at least contact our reps and senator to see if we can go anywhere down that way. But I would want them to have some skin in the game, you know?
So Mark, just to put it in perspective, the attorney, I worked with Jim Lynch in the past, who acted in many ways as guardian. So a lot of times it's handled by attorneys. It isn't a state-funded kind of thing.
No, but we have to report, all the reporting has to be done to this, by, to the state.
Well, it's to the state guardian, who, I mean, I don't really see him as such. I mean, I, it's just to make sure that the person who is assigned isn't doing what they're trying to prevent other people from doing. It's kind of a check, a check stop to, to make sure that that person isn't taking money or abusing the person in any way. So it really goes to, I mean, it goes to the state. You put it in this web thing, but then it's really monitored by like an oversight thing that just makes sure that there's no abuse going on. You know, it's just so prevalent. The abuse is just so prevalent that there has to be somebody doing oversight to make sure that.
That's just the abuse we're dealing with.
Exactly, exactly.
It's one of the reasons why DHS is not assigning the responsibility. Because the individuals are, they have other obligations other than to ensure that an individual's personal needs are being taken care of. And you wanna have that checks and balances. So the reporting is not necessarily to try and ensure that the state has the information as much as being a good fiduciary. And that's really what we're saying.
This is true.
Any other questions?
Like the last five minutes, it's been a lot, I'm gonna understand a lot better.
Okay, good.
Yeah, appreciate the one.
Well, actually, my mind is going off in a little bit different of a direction, honestly, in terms of, in fact, I'm not sure if the state should, state or the county should fund certain things. I actually think it should be more of a charitable program. I think if people want to buy in and wanna help their community, they should actually look to help one another. I mean, we, we recognize, and I, I spoke with the seniors, was it last year, the year before, on abuses of a lot of our seniors and how they're abused. I took a ride along with a number of deputies on the North End and we talked about a lot of the abuse.
I took a ride along with a number of deputies on the north end and we talked about a lot of the abuses that take place in our senior community. Um and a lot of the community is understanding that, there's a lot of people that recognize it. My, all the folks up in Summer Lake area where I live, they all recognize it and they see it and they've seen the abuses take place. So if we recognize that that's actually a problem and it's prevalent in our community, I'm just wondering if maybe there is something that we can do on more of a charitable level, rather than having the government step in and, and play the role constantly. It's just where my mind was going here, because I'm playing that as advocate with the discussion of who's to be responsible for funding it.
Right.
Because a lot of times when the state steps in, they definitely have demands on you as well, and that's true, so.
Right, and I, I mean, I totally appreciate that, it's just really hard to get people to actually, I mean, we started the Clamath Village, which is an, an agency, three years ago to get people out volunteering and helping visit people and, which is a step down from taking on responsibility.
Right.
And we have had, I mean, we probably have twelve volunteers after three years of, you know, beating the bushes and begging and pleading, um.
Let alone the people that are willing to contribute actual dollars to, to reward that.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I, and, and I know that my, my statement in that is somewhat uh futile. Uh I just, I'm speaking my mind as loud as I can.
Yeah. Oh yeah.
Because it's a shame that, you know, we, we recognize that these are problems in our community, but we don't put our money where our mouth is.
Yeah.
And, and it's unfortunately left to the government to, to step in and play this role. Which I, I don't know if it's, it's technically appropriate in my mind, in my way of thinking.
Do you guys have any other questions?
I do not, no, thank you very much Charlie for.
I just think that something, if we wait for the community to do this, um I will be underground.
And I might be too.
And I believe we have to do something, and so I'm encouraging you to consider that.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you guys.
You as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
Have a good day.
You as well. Well, uh that there was okay, um. Is there any other uh discussion for today, I, I know we have the ASON updates on there as well. Um if there were any ASON updates uh for today. Uh one thing I forgot this morning to ask, if there were um additions to the agenda. And there was one, of course, I asked if you could put on the other day. And that was on the, the variants for paramedics. So I just suppose we should let the record show that that was uh an addition. Let me get a poll, there is an addition.
You forgot to ask me.
Yeah, I've got to ask her, but at the front, at the beginning, I'm just, for, for the record. Um, do you have nothing else? All right, thank you guys very much, uh it's been a good meeting, some really good discussion today. Some, some good food for thought, um the Warner Creek discussion was very interesting. Um we will adjourn the meeting at two thirty-six, five, whatever that comes as.